Good evening. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October. The first item on our agenda this evening is our presentation of Student Citizen of the Month Award, and I will be asking Vice Mayor Kaprowski to handle that, please.
Good evening. I'm Vice Mayor Kaprowski, and it's my pleasure to announce the names of the Gilbert Student Citizens of the Month. The recipients were nominated by their teachers and principals for demonstrating good citizenship and character. We appreciate the opportunity not only to recognize these hardworking students, but to also thank all of their teachers and school administrators in the community. We appreciate all your efforts to educate and influence our young residents. Our schools are some of Gilbert's greatest assets. All of the teachers who took time to complete the nomination form were entered into a drawing for $100 gift card donated by Culinary Dropout. We'll now draw one name from the group to receive that gift card. The winner of the gift card is Ms. Marin Cole from Centennial Elementary School. Congratulations. We will have this gift card mailed to you at your school, and thanks again to all of those who participated and submitted a student for an award. At this time, we're going to begin our Student Citizen of the Month presentation. Please enjoy. All of our students are likely listening virtually tonight. For those of you who are receiving an award tonight, a certificate and packet will be sent to your school. We'll begin with all of our elementary schools. From Ashland Ranch Elementary, Drayden Giannelli. From Burke Elementary, Logan Toy. From Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Angelo Zolfo. From Centennial Elementary, Laney Schramm. From Chaparral Elementary, Avery Thompson. From Charlotte Patterson Elementary, Ethan Berry. From Christ Greenfield Lutheran School, Beau Brito. From Leading Edge Academy, Gilbert Elementary, Kendry Hopkins. From Oak Tree Elementary, Adrian Chavez. From Pioneer Elementary, Chase Riley. From Riggs Elementary, Anne Marie Barzy. From Santana Elementary, Ellie Fuentes. From Settlers Point Elementary, Addison Cortez. From Spectrum Elementary, Austin McCoy. From Town Meadows Elementary, Erin Andrade. From Val Vista Lakes Elementary, Trent Nevett. Now we will honor our junior and senior high students. From Canyon Valley High School, John Michael Blanco. From Campo Verde High School, Grace Lauren Rucka. From Cooley Middle School, Eva Gonzalez. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Shavi Koi. From Gilbert High School, Hannah Scotts. From Greenfield Junior High, Maisie Paulsifer. From Highland High School, Mackenzie Gibson. From Leading Edge Academy Early College, Anaya Sutherland. From Leading Edge Academy Gilbert Middle School, Toby Lucero. From Mesquite High School, Teagan Keel. From Mesquite Junior High, Aiden Cusifer. From Perry High School, Maura McCatharine. From Payne Junior High, Gigi Brown. From South Valley Junior High, Benjamin Staton. From Williamsville High School, Haley Gates. Thank you and congratulations to all of our student citizens. Keep up the great work.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I miss doing Student of the Month. I'm still sad that they had to all be virtual this month, but hopefully we'll be able to get back to that soon in the future. Do we have any Scouts, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts present in the room? I don't see any. Councilmember Anderson, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I will please invite Pastor Thor Strandhold of Valor Christian Center to the podium. Thank you for joining us this evening, Pastor. It's always nice to see you.
Now we're on. Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Kaprowski, members of the council, thank you so much for having me back tonight. I really appreciate it, and I love this venue. This is beautiful. I love it. In today's times that we're living in, we have many decisions that need to be made. One group says, "Let's do it this way." Another group says, "Let's do it that way," and you wonder, "Who can you trust? Who can you trust?" Well, in the Bible, in the Book of Proverbs, which is the wisdom book of the Bible, it says in Chapter 3, Verses 5 and 6, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, lean not to your own understanding, but in all your ways acknowledge him, and he will direct your path." Let's pray. Lord, I thank you that you will direct our town council in decisions that need to be made tonight. Thank you, Lord, that you give them wisdom, knowledge, guidance, direction for the benefit of our town and for the benefit of our people, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
First, we'd like to recognize this month as Alzheimer's Awareness, Alzheimer's and Caregiver Awareness Month, and I would like to invite down Ken. Is that right? Oh, sorry, Scott. One name or another. Sorry about that. Too many names to keep straight this evening, Scott. Sorry about that. Thanks for joining us here this evening. Whereas the town of Gilbert recognizes the importance of Alzheimer's disease and related dementia in caregivers, and whereas Alzheimer's disease and related dementia has a significant impact on the health and well-being of our residents, and whereas more than 6.2 million Americans, including 150,000 Arizonans, live with Alzheimer's disease, which is the fifth-leading cause of death in the state, and whereas Arizonans are directly engaged in educating about the disease and improving the care of persons with Alzheimer's disease and related dementias, and whereas the town of Gilbert supports an increase in our community awareness of Alzheimer's disease and related dementia and caregivers, now therefore I, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of Gilbert, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 2021 to be Alzheimer's and Caregiver Awareness Month in this community and encourage all of our residents to learn about Alzheimer's disease and the vital role of caregivers. Would you like to say a few words?
Just thank you. Proclamations like this are happening all across the country this month and next month, and extremely important as Arizona has the fastest growth rate in Alzheimer's disease now and predicted over the next decade because of our growth in population and, of course, the aging of our population. So please, talk to your neighbors. If you know of someone, a caregiver, or someone with the disease that's coping with it, dealing with it, give them the support and tell them you care. Thank you.
Kristy, want to get a photo? Thank you so much. Thanks for coming this evening. Next, we have Youth Service Day. Councilmember September?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite up Joseph Yang. Joseph is with a nonprofit called the Teen Unity Board, and I have a proclamation that's going to declare Youth Services Day. Thanks, Joseph. Whereas the Teen Unity Board, a nonprofit organization, has announced Youth Service Day to recognize youth in the community who are committed to the betterment of others as well as serving the community while continuing to commit their time to other necessities such as their education, extracurriculars, sports, and maintaining a healthy social life. Whereas 29% of Gilbert's population is under 18 years old and considered youth, and whereas youth volunteer recognition could raise future leaders in our community, will raise future leaders in our community. Whereas during and before and well after the pandemic, youth volunteers have been a vital piece in maintaining various nonprofits and community resources as they were the least vulnerable and strongest age group. Whereas the amount of time-consuming projects youth are focused in including school, extracurriculars, and maintaining a healthy social life, many youth continue to use their valuable time to focus on the betterment of others and our community, and whereas experience and volunteer capacity assists youth in gaining practical knowledge in the workforce, now therefore on behalf of the Mayor Bridget Peterson, hereby dedicate and proclaim October 19th as Youth Service Day. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I just want to say thank you to the mayor and council for proclaiming this day. Youth service is such an important thing. I mean, just all across the board, youth is just important, and in that proclamation, you got to hear why.
Great, thank you. And Joseph, I think there's somebody that you'd like to present with an award as well. Why don't you have them come down?
All right, awesome. I'd like to invite down Emma Kane. All right, so I'm actually the president and founder of the Teen Unity Board, a local nonprofit based here in Gilbert, Arizona, and the Teen Unity Board's mission is to promote teen leadership through the unifying of teen leaders throughout the state of Arizona. We have three main goals, and our first main goal is to equip and educate the future leaders of our community. It's to assist teens in gaining practical knowledge of their future career choice, and it's also to promote teen leadership wherever, through the betterment of our community. And we're here today to honor Emma Kane, who's dedicated her time and efforts to the Chandler Police Department as a cadet, and primarily to a local elementary school where she volunteers most of her time, and she actually attends a high school, Highland High School, here in Gilbert. So without further ado, I'd like to present the Presidential Volunteer Services Award to Emma Kane. So this is a certificate from the Office of the President of the United States awarded to Emma Kane for her volunteer service to our community.
And Emma, you're going to have your hands full because this is a letter from the President of the United States acknowledging your award.
And Emma, I have the President's Volunteer Service Award to put around your neck. Congratulations.
Thank you, Joseph and Emma, for being here tonight and for accepting these awards.
Next, can I please have Amy Thames join me? Amy, I thought that you had been with the town as long as I had been volunteering with the Planning Commission, but you actually joined us after the fact. So you've been with us, what, just over 14 years? I feel like you're the last surviving member of the planning department that I knew from years ago. We've done a lot of projects together. I'm so happy to be here to congratulate you and to say best wishes and good luck into the future. She's retiring. I'm not going to read all of this, but you have made an incredible impact on this community, one that will never be forgotten into the future. The last three years alone, you have worked on the refresh of the LDC with us, and it is probably the best LDC we've ever done because of you and because of your dedication to that project. I want you to take this, and I want you to give your husband, George, a big hug and say congratulations to him as he retires from Mesa Fire Department, and go on your happy way to your new home in another state. And I'm so proud of you, and I'm just happy to have spent time with you over these past 14 years. Thank you. Let's get here. Let's at least get a photo. He's up there for a photo, so let's at least get a photo. I didn't even ask her if she could do remote work. Next, we have Mark Hunsaker, and another member of the council is going to recognize. Yes, Councilmember Hendricks.
I don't know Mark, but this must be him coming down here. You know, I found out I was going to be recognizing Mark here tonight, and I called the town manager, Patrick, and I says, "There's a lot of things in the council I don't like, and there's some things I do like." And one of my favorite things is recognizing some of the great staff that we have. And I may have met Mark before. I don't know if I have or not, but I called Patrick, and I said, "Can you tell me a little bit about him?" Because we have a letter of recognition here which says a lot of good things, and I'm sure they're all true, and it's great stuff. But I said, "Can you talk to some of his coworkers? Can you talk to somebody that can give me the real dirt, something I can share at the meeting that might maybe embarrass him would be the best part?" And they came back with a few things, and this is a lengthy letter of recognition. I'm not going to read all of this, but I'm going to just talk about a few things that I learned. I learned that he is somewhat of an outdoorsman. He likes to hunt and fish, and I wanted something juicier in that. And so I learned that he is a storyteller. He likes to tell stories. I didn't clarify whether those stories are true or not, but I'm looking at him smiling with his hat, and I'm betting some of those stories are embellished just a hair when he tells them because that makes the best stories. Nobody wants to hear the truth. Mark and I'd probably get along well because I enjoy the same thing. But the thing that really stuck in my mind, and they sent me a couple of paragraphs, so I'm not going to read it, but I'm just saying the things that stuck in my mind that were special about Mark. And Mark's had a reputation over the years of being a real team player with his coworkers. He considers his coworkers family. It's not unusual when Mark would take food to a sick coworker that wasn't at work or go check up on him. You know, as a coworker, what more can you ask for? I mean, a guy that'll take care of you when you're sick, a guy that cares about you, a guy that helps you out with your job, a guy that trains you, and a good storyteller that can make up a story that'd keep your attention and make you excited. And when Mark walked up here, I know he worked in waste services, and as I read the letter of recognition, it talked about some of the things that he'd worked on, some of the projects and recycling, and it reminded me of a story that isn't directly about Mark, but it's about the good people that worked with Mark and do their great, the great jobs they do. And I asked him when he came up here, I said, "Did you ever drive any of the trucks?" Because I didn't really know for sure from reading this, and he said, "Oh, yeah, I've done that, too." And so I was going to just share a story. I just finished building a house, and as I was building it, we had this little bathroom out in the front, a little porta-pot, and as I was building the house, you'd get scrap every day, and some of the scraps heavy, and I'd take it off to the dump, and it cost me $100 to get rid of it. So I had a habit of filling up the trash can with stuff that I don't know if it belongs in there or not, but I was always impressed if those trucks could pick it up. And I'd see them straining to pick it up, and I'd kind of hide around the fence just in case. And one day, that truck pulls up, and he stops. He jumps out of the truck, and he starts running up to my house, and I'm thinking, "This is it. I finally got caught. I'm going to get it today." Well, he gets halfway up to the house, and he takes a quick turn, and he runs into the outhouse, and he runs in there. I'm thinking, "Well, that's a little different," and I didn't know quite what to think of it. And he comes out, and I'd walked out thinking I'm going to be in trouble for something I put in the trash, and I start talking to him, and he says, "We drive these trucks," and he says, "You know, I really appreciate that bathroom in your front yard because I need a place to go." And so I asked him, "Where do you stop?" And he says, "Oh, we can stop back at the transfer station. You know, we can stop at Circle K. We can stop wherever." But it wasn't something I've ever thought about, but I'll appreciate it in the future. And then he dumps my can after that, and a little bit of stuff fell out on the ground when he dumped it because it was probably too full to start with. Guy jumps back out of the truck. He picks up the little bit of stuff he dropped on the floor, and he says, "You want me to dump it again?" And I said, "No," but it was just exemplary of what I've read here of the kind of people that we have in the town and the dedication they have and the pride that they have. Because as they say all the time, "You can't pay for this kind of loyalty. You can't pay for this kind of dedication. It has to be built in to the town." You want to say a couple of words? How about one of those stories, even a short one? There's got to be one.
Talk about trash stories. There's several we could tell, but we'd probably be in trouble. But one of my favorite ones is when storms happen, the trash cans, if they're empty, they blow across the street or down the road, and people call in and say, "I've lost my can," or "It disappeared." And this one elderly lady... can, or there was, disappeared. And this one elderly lady called, and so I threw a can in the back of my pickup one out there. And I pulled it in front of her house, and I looked, right up the neighbor across the street, they had put a sign on this trash can, and it's as tall as the trash can, and it says, I am lost, please take me home. So I knocked on this lady's door, and she goes, yes, I don't know where it went. I said, well, ma'am, could that be it right across the street? She goes, well, yes, that must be it. So, but we'll have to say, it's been a wonderful 25 years plus. I've met a lot of good people, had a lot of good times, and have always been blessed by working for this town. And the people I work with, they are my family. So, yes, I do take care of them, but they always take care of me. I've never worked at such a place that employees actually cared about each other that much. So it's humbling to be here.
Thank you, Mark, for 25 years. How much better does it get? And how much better can you exemplify the culture of our staff working at Gilbert and what's been built here? I mean, how can you not be proud?
We have a couple more recognitions this evening. The next one is for Albert Moreta. Could you please come down? Albert has provided 25 years of service to the town of Gilbert. His most recent position was a Fleet Division Senior Technician. Hi, Albert. On behalf of mayor and council, it's our distinct pleasure to express our heartfelt congratulations to you as the Fleet Division Senior Technician upon your retirement from the town of Gilbert. For 25 years, you've dedicated your career to serving the town in the Fleet Division, and it is with immense gratitude and appreciation that we recognize and commend you for your extensive and valuable service to the community. When you first started working for the town on September 30th, 1996, Gilbert's population was approximately 68,000, and the fleet was small enough to be tracked on a large whiteboard. Now, the town has grown to over 250,000 residents, and the fleet consists of 948 assets, everything from a two-wheeled trailer to a $1.5 million fire ladder truck. In your role, you are best known for being the friendly, helpful, patient face of the NASC Fleet operation, assisting town employees with their vehicle needs. And that primary focus is supporting of the police fleet. And you have shown unwavering commitment to the safety of our dedicated men and women and canines of law enforcement. Your dedication to your craft is exhibited in your longstanding ASE Master Technician status and the hundreds of hours of training you have taken to stay on top of the ever-evolving fleet industry. On behalf of the town council and the residents of our community, it is a pleasure to convey our appreciation. And thank you for your dedication to your team and to providing safe, efficient, and high-performing vehicles and equipment to the employees of Gilbert, and for leaving a lasting legacy. Thank you, and congratulations on your retirement.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next recognition is of Joseph Smith for his over 23 years of service to the town of Gilbert as Water Distribution Superintendent. Hi, Joseph. On behalf of council, or mayor and council, it's our pleasure to express our heartfelt congratulations to you as Water Distribution Superintendent upon your retirement from the town of Gilbert. For over 23 years, you've dedicated your career to serving the town in many roles, beginning as a utility worker in the wastewater department, before serving the water department in many roles. Joseph is a decorated U.S. Army veteran who served in Operation Desert Storm as an M1A1 tanker from 1987 to 1991. Thank you so much for your service. During this service, Joseph was awarded the Bronze Star for his actions in saving a British Infantry Squad from friendly fire in combat. Joseph has the heart of a public servant, and between his military service and career in local government, Joseph has dedicated more than 30 years of his life to helping others. It is with immense gratitude and appreciation that we recognize and commend Joseph for his extensive and valuable service to the community. Your exemplary career in Gilbert has been marked by professionalism and dedication, as reflected so positively within the Water Division that you have helped build. Your valuable insights and contributions to water management have helped to shape the town through periods of rapid growth. When Joseph started working for the town in 1998, Gilbert's population was approximately 80,000, and the water system consisted of 428 miles of pipe and approximately 3,000 fire hydrants. Now, the town has grown to over 250,000 residents, and the water system covers over 1,422 miles of pipe and contains over 14,000 fire hydrants. Your vision and expertise has shaped the Water Division for the past 23 years. You've been involved in four water treatment plant expansions, the construction of one new surface water treatment plant, seven new drinking water wells, and three reservoirs. In your tenure, you've used your extensive knowledge and experience in the field of asset management to develop industry-leading operations and maintenance programs within the Water Production Division. You have been instrumental in the development of our long-range infrastructure plan, and had the vision and drive to pursue automated meter-reading projects, and through your leadership and guidance, put the town in a position to begin the conversion to automated meter-reading. On behalf of the town council and residents of our community, it's with respect and gratitude that I convey our appreciation to you, Joseph Smith, for your professionalism and outstanding contributions to the town. Congratulations on your retirement.
I'd just like to give thanks to the town of Gilbert for giving me the opportunity to work for them. It's been a pleasure through the rough patches, through good times and bad. And I'd like to thank our current water management right now, and all the way down from Leah, Jessica, Eric, and Rebecca. They've done an outstanding job, and I appreciate them. And I'm not done with public service yet. My next venture is going to go work for the U.S. Forest Service. So, still working, still young, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, and thank you to everyone that we presented proclamations or congratulated you on your retirement this evening. You've given immense hours of service to this community, to our residents, to us as council members, and we appreciate everything that you do. Town Clerk, can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Bridget Peterson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Young Kaprowski?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks?
Present.
Councilmember Scott September?
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke?
Here.
Councilmember Amy Yentes?
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you, Town Clerk. Councilmember Yentes is joining us virtually this evening. She will be part of any discussion that happens here. Councilmember Yentes, please remember to speak up if we don't remember to ask for your comments. You've done this before, so I know you're very good at that. I will now move to Communications from Citizens and pass to Vice Mayor Kaprowski.
The Communications from Citizens portion on the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government that are not on the printed agenda. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the town council will be listening to the citizens who wish to address us on the non-agenda items. We regret that we will not be able to respond beyond thanking you for your comments. When your name is called, you'll come forward to the podium, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Please begin by stating your name and place of residence, and then begin speaking. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. Personal attacks, political speeches, and profanity are inappropriate in this forum and will be grounds for ending your time on the podium. Our first speaker this evening will be Amy Hammond, followed by Jim Torgerson. If you could please make your way to your right, come down the steps, and come to the podium to speak.
Good now? Okay, I'm originally from northern New Jersey, and I moved here about 20 years ago. I moved to get away from the crowds and congestion. The crime was increasing, and the prices were going up with it. I moved then to Scottsdale, where it was great for a while, until greedy politicians and developers destroyed that town. I was hopeful for Gilbert. We bought our home, hoping it would be our forever home. Then the apartments started to creep up, and up and up. I wrote to the mayor, and I expressed my displeasure with this, and she stated that these were plans that were developed 10 years ago. But that's not true. Zoning changes are not from 10 years ago. Trying to fit 18 homes on a 1.8 acre of land that was once a single-home lot was not from 10 years ago. Why are there all these yellow signs about zoning changes? What happened to the plan? What changed from one administration to the next? It makes a voter wonder. Why does one small town need miles of apartments like by the San Tan Mall? And then even more added, where single-family homes were zoned to go? Why do we need even more apartments to go where businesses were zoned to go? Without all these apartments, extra people, drivers, and students, we would not need an outlandish bond like that one will raise taxes and most likely never get to the places that actually could use the money, like schools and classrooms, not the administration. If all these zoning changes go through, this town will be broken down and trashed in less than 10 years. We do not need or want any more apartments or multifamily homes and the bond. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Please refrain from clapping. We will have to stop the communications from citizens if people continue clapping.
One, it's Jim Torgerson, I live in Gilbert, Arizona. I actually derail what I want to say, because you can't have my attention again. Besides, I'm putting out a report, no on your bond, I mean, take it down, and actually with a state rebar, we knew, or yes on question one. Wanted to point out that the committee paid for that, the treasurer is Councilwoman Tilke, the donors are Haiti Building Corporation, HDA Architects, Haiti Building Corporation, again, someone that works at ASU, the Public Schools, Whitney Morris, so that's builders, Suntory Builders, and someone from America that can't paint by it. So, that derailed me. A little upset about it, but since I own a parent's print shop and buy, buy the gallon, I'm gonna spare you this.
What I do want to say is that I feel that the house is burning. You guys have lost control of your own town. I'm looking at two FOIA requests, and someone must have said something to the mayor at some point about an investigation into town for political activism, which everybody in this town has been screaming about for months. It's been happening, it continues to happen, and such things as, let's pay for sex affirmation surgery come up, and some of you never say no to staff, ever. Well, that's just indicative, because staff doesn't have to do anything to get you to rubber stamp it. So instead, I can read through this and see that no one received their copy, no one supposedly knew about this. I saw it today. I know a couple council people saw it today. Someone else shared with me the FOIAs. And it's pretty pathetic that the tail wags the dog up here, and it's a complete lack of leadership all the way around. There's a lack of respect from some in the staff to be able to do this to you. I've operated many businesses in my life. I've been hired by companies to fix it, and it always starts, employee problems always start with a lack of respect for ownership or upper management. And in this case, I gotta think it's owner, it's the highest fish on the steak. Because there is no reason that these people should have been denied this. There's no reason that the mayor should have found out about it from somebody else and inquired on October 4th. This should have been knowledge to everybody sitting up here, but apparently it wasn't? I cannot understand how some heads aren't gonna roll. But if you've continually rubber-stamped everything in front of you, including ridiculous vague bonds, maybe they feel safe in doing that. So I hope someone up here finally grows a pair and does something. This is absolutely pathetic. Thank you for my three minutes.
Please refrain from clapping. Our next speakers will be Rebecca Wyatt and Ryan Handelsman, followed by Ryan Handelsman. Just to give you a warning, so you can walk down to the microphone, please. Okay, Ryan Handelsman, our next speaker, followed by Dave Rosenfeld.
All right. Mayor, you went on record and said you faced, quote, "a barrage of attacks by opponents who don't like my politics, leadership, or me personally." I remind you that we are all citizens of Gilbert, not your opponents. You also said that we submitted false complaints. How could we submit a false complaint when the mere definition is a statement that a situation is unsatisfactory or unacceptable? A growing majority of the community finds your conduct to be just that, unsatisfactory and unacceptable. In this report, Mr. Cassidy noted that you exercised poor judgment, and you've been politically castigated for your errors and will face additional public criticism. He's right. After all of this, what do you do? You make a failed attempt, portray yourself as the victim, labeling this as a political move. Even as recent as a couple of hours ago, you go on your own political move with respect to everything that Mr. Torgerson was just talking about. Can you define the word hypocrite? Both your actions and your words prove that you did not learn anything from this experience, except that you truly believe that your conduct is acceptable. You literally called the residents of Gilbert your opponents. May I remind you that this is a democracy? It's our town, not yours. We're not opponents. We're citizens, and we deserve to be treated fairly. Your conduct has been an embarrassment, something as simple as forgetting a little girl's award at a recent town meeting, to how you treat the town employees, attempts to censor the public in speaking at these types of meetings, favoritism towards campaign donors, et cetera, all of which you try to spin into personal attacks on you. It's clear that you forgot why you're sitting in that chair. Yet you sit there and expect the citizens, or as you refer to them as your opponents, to not only accept your behavior, but turn the other cheek and give you access to a half a billion dollar blank check? Talk about exercising poor judgment. Take a moment, review the oath that you took, reflect on the responsibilities that you have. You should be ashamed of yourself. Stop pointing fingers. Hopefully, you don't consider this to be too aggressive. And by the way, I'm still waiting for an apology.
Please, please refrain from clapping. We're all listening to the comments. Our next speaker will be Dave Rosenfeld. Our next speaker will be Dave Rosenfeld, followed by Nancy Hurst.
For the record, it's Dave Rosenfeld. I live here in Gilbert. Madam Mayor, Town Council, most of you know me. Most of you know I have served for more than 20 years in the United States Army. I'm currently the Vice Chair of our town's Veterans Advisory Board. I'm the Vice President of a local veterans charity. Neither of those are as hard as being an HOA president. I mention this because most of you who sit on this dais know what service is about. It's about giving back in its purest form. And yet, I will never sit on that Town Council because of the way some of the people in this room treat the members who are sitting on this Town Council. They fail to understand the very basic tenants and that if they were to attack me the way they have attacked some of you, it would probably be a very different outcome at the end of the day. Socrates once said, "Strong minds discuss ideas, average minds discuss events, weak minds discuss people." There are some very weak minds in this room today. As I drive around Gilbert, a town that I moved into after traveling the world and our nation while in uniform, I was in awe of what a small-town feel we have here. Today, I am almost sickened by the weak minds that insist on putting up purple signs, not discussing ideas or issues or events, but attacking those who sit on this council, on this dais and serve our community. I have been privileged to know Mayor Peterson, both as a member of the Town Council and as our mayor. Those who spread rumors, lies, and innuendo, and I promise you, she doesn't hate cats, do so because they lack the very thing that our mayor has, which is integrity. There are cowards who refuse to identify who they are on the signs they post. There are cowards who file false accusations and lawsuits. There are cowards who state they are for our town, support our town, and sue our town. Our mayor has always put the people of Gilbert first. That is her agenda. So let me be very clear. I am voting in support of our town. I am voting yes on the bond measure. I trust our mayor and our Town Council to continue to do that which is right by the people of Gilbert. And I remind everyone, there are another 25,000 veterans in our community who also agree. Thank you for our time.
Our next speaker will be Nancy Hurst, followed by Les Presnick.
Hello, I am Nancy Hurst. I am grateful to be here today. I've been a Gilbert resident for 21 years and during that time, I've worked as a Realtor for Gilbert Public Schools and for small and large businesses. I have seen this wonderful town grow and flourish and I am actively trying to do my part to make Gilbert a pleasant, safe place to live and work. I want to go on record to say I fully support the transportation bond. Our last bond was in 2007, as you know, and the town is just now running out of those funds. The bond is critical for our continued growth and I wholeheartedly trust the leadership of Mayor Peterson to use those funds on critical infrastructure projects. That will continue to make our town one of the best places to live in the country. I also want to address, I just feel compelled to address the signage that I see around town. It is something I've never seen before and honestly has me shaking my head and wondering if I'm really still in Gilbert. The signs are, in my mind, dishonest, ugly, and a horrible example for the future leaders some of them may be in this room. And that is my opinion. I'm ashamed of whoever the people are that are behind the attacks. I just feel that there needs to be, they need to check themselves. Again, I want to wholeheartedly support the bond so Gilbert can continue measured and smart growth and keep our roads the very best that they can be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Les Presnick. Les?
Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Kapowski, and Town Council. My name is Les Presnick. I've been a resident of the town of Gilbert for at least 35 years. So I have watched it grow from 10,000 people to what it is today. And I have been a part of that, having served my community in some capacity continuously since 1990. I have sat where you are for 12 years. Before that, when I first met Councilmember Anderson, when he was our planning director. So I've served the town in some capacity since 1995. I am very proud to say that I am the current Chairman of Veterans Advisory Board. Dave Rosenfeld stole everything that I wanted to say and I'm not going to repeat that. But I do want to make a couple of points. Number one, I learned a long time ago, 1997, when I ran the first time and lost my first election, the Arizona Republic Reporter asked a question of all eight candidates. Besides the school issue, and we were dealing with a school bond during that same election, what is the other issue that you think is most important that if you had a magic wand, you would fix right now? I learned two things. Number one, as a politician, you never answer the question that you're being asked. Because I was the only one that answered the question. Everybody else said it's the schools. We've got to take care of the schools. I said it's pavement. We need to fix our streets. And that was 1997. Today, we have a bond issue in front of us and I fully support it. I supported it when I was on Town Council. If we don't have good roads, everything else is wrong about the town. People notice potholes. If our firefighters, if our police officers can't get to the point where they need to be safely, then there's something wrong. If there's one basic tenant of a town besides public safety and water and all of that, you gotta build safe streets, all right? The mayor doesn't control those bonds. This is a council manager form of government. She is just one vote, just like everybody else here. And it was a 5-2 vote to put this before the town. And the other thing that I learned in my public service and continue to learn is that when somebody or some bodies cannot debate the issue, they attack people personally. I had not seen the sign with your picture on it, Councilmember Tilke. I've known Kathy for 20-plus years. I've known the mayor for that period of time. They have all served this town honorably and responsibly and you continue to have my support. Thank you.
Thank you to all our citizens that spoke this evening. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. Would any of the council members like to pull any of the items for discussion on the consent calendar? All right? May I?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
If we could pull items in 26?
You're cutting out Councilmember Yentes. What were those numbers again?
I'm sorry, seven?
Uh huh.
And 26?
Seven and 26.
And? Hey, must've cut out there too.
Councilmember Yentes, can you confirm that you would like to pull items seven, eight, and 26?
Yes.
We'll discuss those items after, can we get a motion for the additional items, which would be items number 10 through 25, 27 through 31, and administrative item number 42, a motion to appoint Casey Kendall and Larry Harmer to the Redevelopment Commission with terms beginning November 1st, 2021, and ending October 31st, 2025. So moved. Please vote.
I think they're trying to silence my vote.
It'll be just a moment while we re-log into our voting system.
Kids and their internet.
That motion passes 7-0. Councilmember Yentes, we'll discuss item number seven now.
If you don't mind, I would take seven, eight, 26. Just I'll have to repeat the same points.
Okay.
My concern with these three is, has to do with receiving federal dollars. These are primarily in the form of grants. I understand that there's worthy causes especially, you know, a lot of these grant monies have to do with public safety and we put them to good use. My concern is we have an unbelievable amount of national debt. We are awash in federal dollars. States and local municipalities have also received a deluge of these federal monies. And we've got a $3.5 trillion spending bill that's still being debated in Congress and I understand no one drop is responsible for the flood and, but I do think that there's a responsibility with the insane amount of inflation right now with cars going up and gas prices, the groceries, that we just have to say no at some point and not be a part of the exacerbation of the problem. This can completely be kicked down the road so far. So while I do see some of the value in, you know, the ways in which we want to spend these money, I do firmly believe that Gilbert can cover its own responsibilities to its citizens and borrow off the back of our future generations in order to provide assistance today. For that, for that reason, I'm not supporting these three items.
Thank you, Councilmember Yentes. Any other comments? All right. May I have a motion to approve items number seven, eight, and 26?
So moved.
Second. Motion passes 5-2. That concludes our consent calendar. Mayor Peterson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We will now move to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Do we have any slips? Thank you. To speak. Trying to figure out, they're all the same number. Item number 38 has had a request to be continued to November 2nd and the other 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 liquor licenses on the public hearing agenda. Would anyone like a presentation on those or would we just like to handle those with one motion? Just one motion. Hearing, seeing nods of the heads, I will open the public hearing. We will, I would accept a motion for the six, for 32 through 38. Through, through 38. 32 through 38.
37.
Which one? It was asked, it was requested for continuation and we need to vote to continue that. Mm-hmm. So we would, mm-hmm, to November 2nd. Can I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion passes 7-0. Next on our agenda for the public hearing, we have GP 20, excuse me, GP 21-01 and Z 21-03, the Cottage Lane Project. Do we have, oh, our retiree, Mrs. Amy Thames, to please come to the podium and give us a short presentation? Thank you, Amy. Making you work on your last night.
We'll just give it a moment for the presentation to come on up.
Excuse me, Mayor. Could you open the public hearing on?
I did at the beginning before we did the motion.
Oh, you did?
Yes. I will open the public hearing for 39. There you go. Thank you. We're just waiting for the presentat, oh, there we go.
There we go. All right. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of Town Council. This evening, we are here to discuss Cottage Lane. Cottage Lane is an infill development that is located on Greenfield Road between Elliott and Warner Roads on the west side. It is a 3.54 acre parcel. It used to be an old homestead site. Findley Farms is surrounding it. The request this evening is to modify the general plan to increase the density up one category from 3.5 to 5, to 5.8 dwelling units per acre, and to change the density, or the zoning category from SF35 to SFD, PAD with modifications. So here you see the general plan. As I said, it is surrounded by the Findley Farms PAD and there is, it is up one level from density from what the surrounding Findley Farms is with the request. With far as the rezoning, I'm just gonna go to the next slide. It is going to SFD with a PAD overlay. The density change from the general plan is approximately three to four lots. So you can see the lot layout here that would be represented in the development plan, which is part of the PAD, the planned area development. With that being said, Findley Farms did have modifications to their PAD, just as this is asking for modifications. However, the builders within Findley Farms decided not to go to the setbacks that are allowed within that development. They made the setbacks of the homes a little bit deeper than what was allowed within the PAD. So the PAD did allow for a rear setback and side setbacks, a zero and five on the side and 10 on the rear. However, the developer did develop most of the houses at either 15 or 20 with their rear setback and the side setbacks really aren't totally germane to this conversation this evening. The height is allowed within Findley Farms of two stories and the lot coverage is at 50% compared to Cottage Lane, which is front setback at 10, sides of zero and five, rear of 10, with modifications as shown here. So the larger lots of Findley Farms are to the south. The side setbacks are 13 foot to the, to the south property line for the proposed development. To the west, it is an eight-foot side setback for the one lot that sides on to the existing homes. And to the north, which are the smaller lots within Findley Farms, it is a 15-foot setback that is proposed, which is similar to what some of the buildings are at, but most of them are at 20. With that being said, this is a comparison slide that is within your packet comparing what is SF35, what is SFD standard, and what is SFD with a PAD overlay that is being proposed. This is, this is an illustrative of the development that is being proposed. So if you took 3.3 lots out, which is four lots, it would meet the general plan as it is today. So if you think of it that way, four lots is the dividing line with the general plan. And with the zoning, it's fairly similar to what is proposed. Lots are a little bit smaller than what is surrounding. Well, and the, but the setbacks are very similar and the developer did try to adjust the site plan in order to minimize the amount of impact to the surrounding homes. It cannot be a one-to-one, home-to-home ratio. There are some larger corner lots within Findley Farms that there are more than one house backing onto. With that being said, the neighbors surrounding have expressed concern regarding density, lot ratios, as I just discussed. Two-story homes, when most of their homes are one-story, there is one two-story home that is Two-story homes, when most of their homes are one-story, there is one two-story home that is surrounding. It is allowed by right. So if they wanted to do in addition to their home, they could get closer to the property line and they could go taller. But this developer who is proposing has gone two-story by right, which is what the planning, the LDC, the Land Development Code, which is our zoning code allows. The neighbors have also expressed a concern about windows facing their properties. However, there is a requirement for building code, then a certain amount of ingress and egress happen for various rooms within the house. And they are upstairs secondary bedrooms, not the primary bedrooms. Other neighbors and across the street and the other subdivisions to the east have expressed a concern regarding increased traffic. Our traffic department has reviewed that and has determined that twenty-one lots is not a substantial increase to traffic on Greenfield Road at this location. And then the neighbors also would like all setbacks to match what their homes are built at, not necessarily what their ordinance is approved at. I know there are residents here this evening who'd like to speak, and the applicant is also here with a presentation. The Planning Commission did hear this last month and recommended six to one on the general plan. And the dissenting vote was in support of keeping the general plan as is and reducing the lot count. And the recommendation for the rezoning was seven zero. With that being said, the planning staff is recommending approval, along with the Planning Commission, about the general plan amendment and the rezoning this evening. With that being said, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions for me at this time? Seeing none, I would like to have the applicant come down. Please introduce yourself. You know how this goes. Give us your name and city or town of residence, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pleasure to be with you tonight. For the record, my name is Chris Webb with Rose Law Group. My office address is seventy-one forty-four East Stetson Drive in Scottsdale, Arizona. Okay. We got it queued up. Wonderful. Pardon me. So I first wanted to say congratulations to Amy on her retirement, wherever she went. It's wonderful. Very much appreciate working with Amy on this project. She's, we've worked with her on a number of projects over the years. And as you all well know, Amy is wonderful at what she does, so appreciate her efforts here. I wanted to just introduce briefly the property owners and developers for this project with me tonight. Norm Nichols and Brian Nichols with Vasari Asset Management. They're both Gilbert residents and very experienced in the development world here, so wanted to just recognize them tonight. Wanted to just talk to you briefly about Cottage Lane, which is a really cool infill project for the town. Appreciate Amy's presentation, kind of giving an overview, an overview of the project. And what I wanted to do is just kind of talk to you a little bit about why we think this project is a great infill project for the town. And, and why we think that it's compatible with the surrounding area. So, there we go. One of the big things for us and the way we submitted this project to the town was to create certainty, both for the town and for our neighbors. So even though on your agenda tonight, we're only talking about a minor general plan amendment and a rezoning. It's important to note that we have also submitted a complete preliminary plat and our entire housing product application. That all came in at once. It's already all been reviewed. And we did that so that everybody would know exactly what is going to be built. You're not rezoning something speculatively. You will know exactly what's going to be built. Every floor plan and elevation for every single lot in this project has already been predetermined. Again, the idea to give you certainty so you know what you're voting on. I want to talk a little bit about the quality of the development. First off, the development team. So Norm Nichols is the president of Fulton Homes. Brian Nichols is a principal at EPS Group. While this is not a Fulton Homes project and is a personal project for Norm and Brian, they will bring the exact same level of quality to this project that the town has come to expect from Fulton Homes communities. You have a number of them in your town. The design and, and design detail and level of quality, you know, Fulton Homes is known for that. And that applies to the homes, the open space, amenities, tree-lined streets, everything they do. I want to talk about compatibility with Findley Farms. Obviously, we are surrounded on three sides by Findley Farms. And we have spent a lot of time working with our neighbors, talking with our neighbors, trying to make this as, as compatible as we can. First thing that's important to note, because this is an infill project. And so these are going to be individually platted, single-family lots and homes. Okay? Just like Findley Farms around us. So here are the homes. You can see those. These are traditional, single-family homes. This is not the, you know, three-story, super skinny cram as much as you can in their product. These are individually platted, single-family lots and homes. We have very similar lot sizes. Amy touched on this. Our lots are fifty feet wide. Findley Farms are sixty feet wide. So we're very close. We have increased our setbacks to match those of Findley Farms. As Amy mentioned, I think their PAD allows something less than this, but practically what was built, we've tried to match. So we have fifteen-foot rear setbacks, just like they do when we've got five and five side setbacks, just like Findley Farms does. In terms of the lot frontage or the lot ratio on the common property line, that comes up a lot. So I want to point this out. So Findley Farms has seventeen lots that touch our common boundary. We only have thirteen. So I think we've done a pretty good job there. This slide is interesting. I want to show this. So this is a snapshot of our site plan laid over the top of Zillow from a couple of months ago. So the values that you see in the black circles there, they're probably a little off because it's a couple of months old. But, you know, if they're a little up or a little down, our anticipated values are correspondingly a little up or a little down. But what I wanted to show you is, as we tried to do our best to make this compatible with Findley Farms, what we realized is that in Findley Farms, the smaller, less expensive homes are on the north boundary. And the little bit larger, more expensive homes were kind of on the, the west and the southern boundary. And so what we ended up doing is we ended up flipping our site plan. And in doing that, we were able to match up a little bit better home sizes and values. So you'll notice now we have our larger home sizes along the southern boundary and our slightly smaller ones on the northern boundary. And in almost every case, we're either, especially on the north, we're either bigger than or equal to, and we're really close on the south. So we did this to, to match up home values and lots and, and home sizes a lot better. And, and from a value standpoint, you can see we're right there where they are, if not more. This also helped us improve the lot frontage ratio on that common property line. You know, with these, we have these couple of big pie-shaped lots on the south and the north, and you can never match those one-to-one. It's just impossible to do. But by flipping this, we were able to improve the lot ratio, especially on the Franklin's lot there, where now it's down to one and a half lots, which was important because their home is set closer back to that rear property line. On the north, the big pie-shaped lot there, that home is set much closer to the street. They have a much bigger backyard. And so that lot ratio is about two and a half there. But we were able to overall improve that situation by flipping the site plan. Amy touched on this, two-story homes. So yes, we are proposing two-story homes. They are allowed under our existing zoning. They're also allowed under the Findley Farms zoning, even though most of the homes around us are single-story. But what we did to try to improve the privacy, I want to point this out, is we revised our floor plans a little bit so that there are no master bedrooms and there are no common living spaces on the second floor. So all of those windows that you see on the second floor, those are all secondary bedrooms, kids' bedrooms, smaller bedrooms. And we did that to try to improve the privacy concern that was expressed by some of our neighbors. Additional things we've done to try to, to address privacy concerns, we've agreed to raise the common property line wall. It's pretty low in a couple of places, so we'll do that. Can plant additional perimeter trees. We've offered to buy trees for neighbors to plant in their own yards, whichever they prefer. So just a few things we've done to try to increase compatibility. Want to talk about the, the density here. So this is an infill project, but it is not a high-density project. And that's, that's important to point out because most of the infill projects that you see coming to the town are higher-density projects. Under the existing general plan, which allows up to five units to the acre, we're really only asking for three more lots than the general plan already allows. We're proposing five point nine units to the acre where the general plan already allows five. Findley Farms is at just over four units to the acre. So this is a one land use category transition, which historically the town has deemed the appropriate transitional step. And so we think what we're proposing is consistent with the town's historical development pattern and how this whole area has developed. So again, it's not a high-density project. Real quick, I want to talk about the impacts of density because people talk about that a lot. Gosh, you know, this is more dense than we are. What are the concerns? What are the impacts? And, and I want to talk about some typical things on infill projects. Traffic. Traffic always comes up. I know there's concerns about traffic on Greenfield Road. In this case, all of our traffic goes in and out directly on Greenfield Road. So our traffic is not going to be running through the adjacent community. It's also important to note that we have discussed this project in detail with the town's traffic engineer, who determined, and rightly so, that our project, the twenty-one homes in our project, the traffic generated by that project is negligible compared to the traffic volume that Greenfield Road carries and is designed to carry. Now, doesn't mean Greenfield Road isn't busy because I know it is, but that is really completely independent of our project. Parking always comes up on, on infill projects. Every, every home will have a full two-car garage and a full twenty-foot driveway. So I want to make sure you all know that. We're also exceeding the town's guest parking space requirements, so I don't think parking is an issue at all. We've got that covered. Trash collection always comes up. We've already put together a complete trash collection plan that's been submitted to the town. Town's good with it. The density. The additional density between our project and Findley Farms is all internal. So the difference in density between Findley Farms around us and Cottage Lane is those eight lots in the middle. They're all internal. You can't really see them from the outside. They're not going to impact anybody. It's really, they're those internal lots right there. Neighborhood work. So we've had three neighborhood meetings. We have had a ton of conversations and communication with the Findley Farms neighborhood liaison. I don't know if he's here. I haven't seen him, but he might be here. We have done a lot of work. We flipped the site plan, made the other changes we talked about to try to increase compatibility. I know we're not going to make everybody happy. We know that. We've tried our best and done a lot of work. In summary, Cottage Lane is a high-quality, compatible development. It's a great infill project for the town. It is not a high-density project. Five point nine units to the acre. We're excited to have staff and Planning Commission recommendations for approval and appreciate your time. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris at this time?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember September.
Just for the record, I was contacted by the applicant. We spoke this week about this development. Mr. Webb, my question is, so you offered to buy trees for some of the residents who might want them to help mitigate some of the visual impact. I guess my question is, was, was there a, was there at least a minimum size of the tree or box size that you're offering? My, my concern is that it turns into a seedling that in ten years provides value to mitigate visual impact instead of something that might provide a visual impact a little sooner.
Sure. So Councilmember September, appreciate that question. We did not discuss the specifics of the size with the neighbors. I, I don't know that there was complete consensus on which scenario they preferred. We talked about two scenarios, one where we could plant additional perimeter trees on our side of the property to help with screening, as well as alternatively buying trees or, you know, buying gift certificates to nurseries for trees for the neighbors. There didn't seem to be a consensus on which they preferred. So, you know, we can certainly further that discussion. And, and the idea would be to purchase something that will not take ten years to, you know, to reach a, a size where it will provide shade and, and privacy. So we can, we can certainly figure out a, a box size that would work.
Thank you.
It might depend on each person's individual lot to what they're looking for. Any other questions for Mr. Webb at this time? Thank you, Chris. We have four residents that would like to speak. First up, I'll call Annie Franklin and then Jim Constance. Come down to the podium. Just give us your name and town of residence, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Annie Franklin and I live with my husband, John, in Berlin, sad side of the project on number twenty-three sixty-two. Our property will be directly impacted, affected by the Cottage Lane development. When we bought our house twenty-one years ago, over the wall, there was a Findley Farm homestead and we had a view of the mountains. Of course, we knew that down the road, this would change. And we, we, at one time, will have to welcome development. And we were ready to welcome development and development that would reflect the Findley Farm community. The Vasari project, Cottage Lane project does not. Single-story homes are the norm in Findley Farms. Two-story is the exception. In spite of the pushback by the neighbors against the density of Cottage Lane, the developers are ready to cram, sorry to use the word there, twenty-one two-story tightly on an acreage that would in our area support usually half of that. We, we, I remember that there was quite remarks by some of the council members a while back about the density. Several of you remarked on that and were, seemed to be against it. I'm, I'm not sure what happened since. We've met, as mentioned, with the developers several times and our concern about the, the density was clearly laid out to them. But it didn't seem that there was really a readiness for compromise on the, the main lines. From the start, they just tried to placate us with talk of raising our already crumbling walls, throw a three or two at, at us. We feel that these things are just smoke screens to distract from our valid concern about the high density of the project. We intrigued the council to listen to the neighborhood and denied a request of rezoning and asked the builders to go back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Franklin. Next, we'll have Jim Constance and then up next, Cindy Hoffman, please. Jim, just come to the podium. Give us your name and town of residence, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, this on? Yeah, it is. And Councilman, my name is Jim Constance. I am president of TH Ranch, which is directly to the east of this project, right across the street on Greenfield. We don't disagree with the development in and of itself. We have an issue with the traffic. And we've had an issue with the traffic long before this development came in. Basically, you have Greenfield Junior High School right there. You have Greenfield Estates right next to us and TH Ranch. All of those facilities dump in one entry and exit out. Then you have Sierra Madre and Mesquite. Again, they tee in to Greenfield and they dump on to Greenfield. So in the morning, between seven o'clock and nine-thirty, it's crazy. And in the evening, the same thing when people come home. Couple that with the fact that you have the school. And what most people don't realize, unless you're there, in the morning and in the afternoon, when they drop off their children's school, you'll see the west side of northbound Greenfield is closed at one lane because everybody parks there, even though it says no parking. And I've actually stood there and watched policemen go by. And I understand why they go by and they're not doing anything because that's the only method those people have to offload their children safely. So what I'm suggesting and what we would like to see before you render a judgment on this project is that you do a traffic study. Because this is a mess and it's getting worse by the day because we also have, all the apartments are being built further down on Greenfield to the south. And those are all dumping in now as they fill up into Greenfield. So that one two-thousand-foot area is really congested twice a day. And we, some of our families in our development can't turn left into the development. They'll come down and you'll have to go down into the church on past us, go into the parking lot, make a turnaround and come back up to get into our neighborhood. lot, make a turnaround and come back up to get into our neighborhood in the morning and in the evening. So it's a real concern to us. We have no doubt that the development will be good. You know, I'm a retired general contractor. I've looked at the plans. They're nice homes. They're going to be a good development. But for the betterment of all of us, I think you need to have a traffic study before you render a judgment on this and make a final call. And maybe there's an alternative to it that can be worked out. It doesn't have to mean that you not go ahead and do that development, but at least you ought to study it first. That's our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate your time. Cindy Hoffman and then Richard Rico. Cindy, again, please just come to the podium. Give us your name and town of residence.
My name is Cindy Hoffman. I, can you hear me? Sorry. I live in TH Ranch as well, and I quickly wrote some notes because I didn't write anything down before I came. I don't totally approve this project. I agree that we knew that someday there would be something built there. I'm happy to see development there, but I don't think that homes that are half the size of Finley Farms and a quarter of the size of where we live are appropriate for that area. It's too many homes and too small of a lot. But my main issue is the traffic as well. Chris Webb stated that the traffic engineer came and they did an assessment and said that it was fine. That is not true. It is not true. Forty or 50 cars may be a drop in the bucket when you have 1,000 going up and down Greenfield, but it's a different issue when you're trying to turn into your neighborhood in the middle suicide lane. People come out of Finley Farms, they try to merge going north at 50 miles an hour or more. Sometimes you know on Greenfield Road, people get up to 60 on that road. And so they're merging like it's a freeway, trying to go north. I'm trying to turn into the middle lane to go into my neighborhood. I can't do it. I've tried to teach my children to drive. It is really scary to get into an almost head-on collision and scream at them as I think I'm going to die, and I see my life flash before my eyes. Get back into traffic, keep going, we'll turn into the church and turn around. So more homes come, or more, excuse me, more cars coming in and out of that area right across the street and also trying to go north and south is just going to make it worse. So if this is approved and it does go through, then we are asking that at least a light is considered somewhere along that road, either at Mesquite Road or somewhere that will allow a pause in the traffic for people to get in and out safely. Not only for the kids trying to be dropped off and cross, they also crossed with the crossing guard on that same area. So this is just an accident waiting to happen. That's how we feel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cindy. Appreciate your time. Richard Rico, please. Richard, just give us your name and town of residence, please.
Good evening. My name is Richard Rico, and I live at 2346 East Amber Lane here in Gilbert. It's been kind of interesting listening to people talk about how long they've lived here. I've been in the East Valley since 1969 and moved to Gilbert in, I think, about '87. We lived at Cooper and Warner, and we had sheep grazing across the street, and we've lived at, my current house, we're the original owners from 20, 25 years ago, approximately. So my home's directly in line with the large telephone pole from one of the pictures there on the south side, and I'm basically here to tell you that I completely oppose the development as it's currently being planned for the simple reason that I just believe the density is too high. Most of these other issues just obfuscate the issue with regard to density. Putting trees in people's backyards. I have a backyard that's 20 years old. I don't have room for another tree, whether it's a sapling or a box tree. I don't have room for it. And it wouldn't, it also, because of the way my yard is laid out, it would not do anything to provide any kind of screening. The issue with regard to raising the block wall, that block wall is over 20 years old. I don't know a structural engineer around that would stamp a plan to approve increasing the height of a block wall that's already that old without some significant work to it. So those are two of the basic things. I just don't feel like the developer, in reality, has really provided us with any kind of options or modifications. They did say that they flipped the plan over, and all that really did was shift the majority, like, up in the north where they're, now the north side has, the north homeowner on the east end has three homes in their backyard versus the other way where the homeowner on the south side had three homes in their backyard. It's just too many houses. If you take that same acreage and just move it right next door, there's basically 14 houses in Finley Farms that would be the same amount, would occupy the same amount of space. They have 21 planned, and that doesn't include the retention basin, driveway, things of that nature. The other thing that I guess I'm really kind of bothered about is, and this was posted on Instagram, I don't know how many of you might have seen that, but there was over 200 comments on Instagram from people, and I didn't find one person who was in support of this project, not one. But the other thing that really kind of bothers me the most is, in some of our meetings with the developer, you know, they mentioned that we're, that they have property rights too, and nobody's trying to take away their property rights. But the deal is, they bought the property with an existing zoning. If they didn't feel that they could make a profit off of the existing zoning, then maybe they shouldn't have bought it. Or if they felt they wanted to come back and rezone it, then that's something that they would do at their own risk. But that's not on us, and they can build two-story houses. Those are perfectly fine. It's, everything relates to the density. So I would just ask that you deny this request, ask them to go back and look at another plan. They've got other options for that area, and we would request that you take that under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming in this evening. Mr. Webb, would you like to come back down and maybe address any of those comments or questions that you heard?
I guess just a couple of quick thoughts and response. Obviously, you know, a couple of folks expressed concern with the traffic on Greenfield Road. Totally get that. You know, I don't live in that area, but I understand that it is definitely difficult in the evenings and school drop-off and school pickup and whatnot. But I guess what I would say to that is, that is really completely independent of this project, that condition, and I think they said the same thing. That condition has existed long before this project ever came to the table. So while that may be something that the town wants to look into, it really is completely independent of our project. And just, you know, again, in terms of the density, you know, as I said before, we recognize that we weren't going to make everybody happy. At the same time, I think we've made a lot of progress, as you can see. You know, we do have, we have two of our neighbors that live immediately adjacent to us here tonight, but, you know, I think maybe everybody else is generally okay with it. I'm not speaking for them. I don't know, but they're not here. So on the density side, again, just as a reminder, you know, we're asking for 5.9. The general plan allows five. It's three more lots than it allows already, so I really don't feel that this is a high-density project. I think any other applicant coming in here is going to be asking you for 10 to 12 units to the acre, and we're asking for half that, so.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Webb while we have him? Seeing none? Thank you. Amy, could you come back to the podium, please? Thank you. Amy, do you happen to know if there are any plans in the future, CIP, for a light there that we discussed this evening?
Madam Mayor, I am not aware of any plans for a signal on Greenfield Road within that mile section. This is the last parcel that is available within that mile, which may have played into the traffic engineer's decision to not request any further traffic studies. They just infilled that 21, 21 lots would impact that one section of road that is built out to its full potential at this time, but I am not aware of any CIP project for that section of road.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Amy at this time? Thank you, Amy. Bring the discussion back here to the council. Would anybody like to, I'll close the public hearing. Would anyone like to lead off on this discussion? Don't everybody jump at once. Councilmember Yentes, I'm not forgetting you either, so please just speak up if you would like to comment.
Mayor, I'll just comment that, you know, based on some of the comments that were stated just now regarding the traffic and transportation on Greenfield Road, that's absolutely within the purview of the town of Gilbert, but independent of this particular site. But I would like to see that staff follow up on that, those items of note within staff resources.
The line at Greenfield Junior High School and the parking on Greenfield Road in the morning and around drop-off and pickup, that's what you're referring to? Thank you. Yes, Councilmember?
Mayor, thank you. Vice Mayor, those were going to be my comments, so I just wanted to thank you for that.
I'll just make a quick comment about traffic congestion. There's nowhere in Gilbert that's not congested right now, and I hope everybody understands that. And that's why we have a $500 million bond up for election. We haven't addressed this situation for over 14 years, and I hope that the residents will reflect what they've been telling us for the last several years, is that there's so much congestion, there's so much work that needs to be done. And you're hearing that tonight from residents who are experiencing that congestion. The other thing about density is infill is a very peculiar thing to work with. We are at a point right now, Gilbert will reach, will reach build-out in about 10 years, nine or 10 years. And what's going, the phenomenon that's going to happen is during that time, it'll be, people will be looking, developers, builders and so forth, will be looking for infill parcels, not looking for the parcels that are on the edge that are frequently very much more, very much sought after as being least expensive, but they'll be looking for the infill parcels. And they're correct. Most of these infill parcels, if you follow along with us, generally they are asking for a much greater density than this. They're asking for 12, 15 units to the acre on these smaller parcels, infill parcels, and it's a difficult decision. But this is one that's come in at a density much lower than that and has tried very seriously to match what's adjacent to it, and we won't see very many of those, and that's why these infill parcels are very difficult to work with.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments or, I'll entertain a motion if somebody would like to make one if no one has any comments.
I'd like to make just a quick comment, Mayor.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilmember Yentes.
I appreciate everybody who has weighed in on this issue. I know there were a lot of communications from citizens included in the packet, and appreciate the developer coming and presenting the information, and I just, I did want to just make a comment that I actually did think that the presentation of this project was really well done, and now that it's a Councilmember Anderson pointing these infill lots are very challenging and present challenges to developers, and I think what has been kind of pushed out of the funnel here is, is pretty outstanding as far as kind of a balance of what can be achieved to blend it with the rest of the neighborhood and make some concessions where it was reasonable to do so, but, you know, we are going to see some of these issues in the future as far as what true, true density looks like. I agree. I don't think this project, we've seen much denser projects come before us, and this doesn't strike me as, as a high-density project whatsoever, but is sensitive to the traffic issues, which I think has been addressed as something that's separate from this project itself, but I do think that this is, this is a good use of this space and am supportive. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second? I have a motion by Councilmember Yentes and a second by Vice Mayor Kaproski. Thank you all for coming tonight. I know that it does seem like it's a lot of density, but really, as of today, they could build five units to the acre. And somebody had asked me a while ago, what is, what we look at as a request and what seems to be a reasonable request. When someone's coming in asking for less than one more unit per acre, it's a reasonable request that we would be looking at very carefully and very closely. And these developers, like Councilmember Yentes said, went above and beyond to make sure the project fit and fit the surrounding area. And Mr. Webb made a great point that we also like to have a little bit more density as you're approaching the road and between the current Finley Farms residents and Greenfield Road. And we will be looking into those traffic issues that were described this evening, and let's get some services, I see our police chief and commander back there. If we can get some services out to Greenfield Junior High School in the morning. I completely appreciate your issue. I live across the street from Gilbert High School, so I, I know what that is like when you're dealing with coming and going in the morning in a school around you. So thank you all for attending this evening. We appreciate your time. Next, we have item number 40, which I missed because I hadn't flipped the page. So open the public hearing on item number 40, zoning Z20-12. Does anyone wish to have a presentation on this item? Seeing none? No comments, no questions? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a vote, please. A motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember September. Please vote. Moving on to administrative items, and I will pass it over to you, Vice Mayor.
Under administrative items, item number 41, we have on the agenda an item to review, have discussion and possible action, a final report and recommendation of Code of Ethics complaints against Mayor Peterson. Per the town code, this discussion must happen in a public forum, and that's why it is on the agenda tonight. I'll be leading this discussion, and I would like to ask the council members, one of the items that it says under administrative items is that it's the discretion of the majority of the council regarding public input requests on an administrative item. So I'd like to ask the other council members whether we should provide consent to the public to speak on this item number 41 tonight, given the comments tonight and in the past. Any thoughts or comments? I'd like to put it to a vote, just to be sure. Could we have a vote? Please vote yes if you would approve providing consent to the public to speak on administrative items.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor Kaproski?
Yes.
We would need a motion in a second.
Oh, okay.
As regular for the vote.
By a time as well. He said it at the same time. Is that her or me?
Councilmember Yentes, what was that comment?
To waste time and allocation of time.
I think you were cutting out, Councilmember Yentes, were you commenting on the time that that would take?
I just request that in a motion to allow this agenda item to buy a time allocation as well, so we can just do it in one motion. Cleared.
I'll make a motion to, or, Councilmember Tulkey, do you have a comment?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we open item 41 up to public comment with a time limit of no more than three minutes each.
A second.
So we have the majority of the council giving the discretion on the public input. This is a bit unusual because we don't have the comment cards filled out for the, for this item. So if you are interested in talking about item number 41 and would like to come up and speak to us, please simply make your way over to this third row of seats in the front, and we will take your comments. If you already spoke during communications for citizens, we have listened to your comments, and you don't need to repeat them at this time, but if you
But if you do wish to speak again, we will have a moment that you can provide your three minutes as part of that. The agenda that I'd like to have for this item is to first start with a brief statement from outside legal counsel Frank Cassidy, followed by if anyone would like to make public comments, they can come up and kind of queue in that third row of seats. The mayor will be permitted to provide some comments. Council members will have discussion and provide any statements, and then we'll have some form of conclusion to this discussion. So, we'll begin. I believe we have outside legal counsel Frank Cassidy on the phone. Mr. Cassidy, could you provide us just with a brief summary of the investigation and the Code of Ethics complaints and conclusions of your report?
Yes, I want to make sure that you're able to hear me okay.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Kaproski. Before I begin, I wanted to thank each of the folks who spoke to me during the investigation, each of the people who submitted the complaints. They were all very cooperative and willing to speak to me. The mayor was very willing to speak to me, Mr. Morrison and staff members as well, so I really appreciated that. Was very much an important part of doing the work. Just to give a quick summary of what the report says, and obviously you have the document, and as councilmembers, all of you have lived through it, and know better than I do probably the substance of really each of the factual scenarios that were at issue, but there were basically four different scenarios where the mayor's conduct was questioned in the ethics complaints. The first one involved the mayor's conduct regarding the Morrison Ranch apartment proposal. The second was a complaint about the mayor's involvement in the Tog Wheelers, Town of Gilbert Wheelers Facebook group and and her comments regarding to the town logo. The third general subject had to do with the mayor's conduct and actions and statements pertaining to the proposal to change the council procedures for public comments, and that was brought to the council on August the 3rd. And finally, there was a challenge of the mayor's refusal to allow a member of the public to speak on a consent agenda item on the 3rd of August agenda. I won't go through every one of the allegations, but in general, on the Morrison Ranch subject, it primarily focused on the mayor's communications that occurred really on a Sunday just before a neighborhood meeting, and really all of you council members received many, many emails on that weekend, so you know very well what it was like in the moment. And the mayor, it seemed to me kind of went out of her way to get the word out about and correct some misunderstandings about what was going on, and she had a lot of communications on that Sunday. And the concern in the ethics complaint having to do with the Morrison Ranch matter had to do really a lot with the tone of the mayor's emails, her friendliness and deference to the developers, Representative Howard Morrison, and her contention that she was dismissive really of the neighborhood concerns, and that also that she identified one particular member of the public, to Mr. Morrison, as being the most aggressive person. Those subjects fell under the ethics subject of fairness and respect, and my finding was on that was that really there was no ethics violation. I felt that, and I've laid all of this out for you because, as I say in the report, really, these are your ethics rules, and you're the ones to decide whether there has been an ethics violation. I simply make a recommendation to you, but my recommendation is that you not find that there was an ethics violation in this situation. There were a couple of instances where, in my opinion, the mayor exercised poor judgment, frankly. One in calling out a member of the public as being the most aggressive. It's true that that person was certainly the most engaged. There were a lot of communications that were going on that day, and one member of the public communicated a lot more with the mayor and engaged, was very responsive, and went back and, excuse me, back and forth with the mayor, so. But it didn't, in my opinion, it didn't help matters to be identified in that way. Certainly, we know that in the zoning game, if you will, often a member of the neighborhood is sometimes identified as sort of the leader of the group, and perhaps, in fact, in the mayor's statement to me, she said, "Well, really, that was my purpose in doing that," but really, Howard Morrison didn't need help on that. He had been following social media, and it just, it really didn't help for that to happen. The second thing that I felt was really a had an instance of bad judgment really was, there were very specific concerns raised by the neighbors about notice. They were, in fact, they even mentioned that they had photos, video of a notice concern. As it turns out, I mean, when you look at the way the rules are interpreted by the staff, almost every element of notice was met, but some of those staff interpretations are not very clear, and the one particularly that jumps out is that the posted notice of the neighborhood meeting is supposed to be within 25 feet of the street. Now, in the in the guidance document explaining how that's to be carried out, the staff interprets that the 25 feet is from the public right-of-way and not really from the street, but when you, when a member of the public looks at that and they see a sign that's more than 50 feet from the traveled, the edge of the traveled lane, it seems like that would warrant at least letting the staff get back to the neighbors with an explanation of how they look at the notice requirement, how they interpret it. As I said, as it turns out, really, the developer did meet pretty much every requirement except for a three-foot discrepancy in where that posted notice was placed. But even that, with having that much concern raised about the information about how the notice for the public meeting was given, if it had been tossed over to staff, staff very well could have exercised its discretion to say, "You know what? Yes, have this public meeting, but because of these concerns, we're going to require you to have a second public, you know, neighborhood meeting" instead of just the one. Now, all of that having been said, when you look at the complaints as a whole, though, there was a remarkable amount of good information that was provided by the mayor. She corrected the record on what was going to happen. She went above and beyond on a Sunday in terms of reaching out to the public. The friendliness and deference to a developer who, you know, was in fact a supporter of hers doesn't seem surprising to me any more than it would if somebody were elected as an anti-development person who was nasty to a developer, right? I mean, obviously, these are your ethics rules, so you get to decide where the fairness and equity line is drawn, but I think as elected officials, you know, it's expected that you're going to carry out in a manner that that's consistent with the way you were elected. So, in any event, I didn't feel that there was any necessarily ethics violation on any of that. There were other complaints about conflicts of interest, confidentiality of documents, and things like that. I've dealt with those in the document. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about those, but I don't think those also are an issue. The only other substantive concern that was raised having to do with the Morrison Ranch ethics complaints had to do with, once it became known that the mayor had had these email communications with Howard Morrison on that Sunday, there were people who were outraged by that, and they went to the mayor, and the two complainants on the Morrison Ranch item indicated that they felt they were being pressured about not, you know, not making ethics complaints, but I didn't find any real evidence of that, and I go into that in some detail in the report, so I didn't find that that was an ethics violation. So, the second subject was this Tog Wheelers and and town logo concern. This kind of turned out to be a little bit of a he-said, she-said issue, and unfortunately, the complainant who was very specific about the allegations that that he was concerned about, he had he was only able to provide me with one name of a person who could corroborate his claims that the mayor was kind of acting in a way or speaking in a way that was indicating that she was out to get people who worked on the logo, and the one person whose name was given to me was not really willing to speak to me. So, it does appear, though, from the information provided by the complainant, that certainly the complainant and at least one other staff member whose information, whose name wasn't provided to me, but there was a text exchange with the complainant that was provided to me, they're feeling a little bit under the gun because of the way the mayor feels about the logo, and I think it doesn't certainly rise to the level, in my opinion, of an ethics complaint, but it does sort of underscore how much influence a mayor has in a community. You know, for a staff member, when they when they've worked on something and then they hear the mayor talking badly about it, that's impactful for a staff member. So, that certainly struck me, but I didn't find that there was any ethics violation. I couldn't, I couldn't support, I didn't find any factual support for an ethics violation on that subject. The third general subject was the council procedures complaint, and this is the ordinance amendment that was proposed at the pass of the mayor that came to the council on August the 3rd. There were basically two elements of this ethics complaint. One had to do with the substance of the proposal, and basically the proposal, as I know that you remember, essentially would change the council's procedural rules to say that the mayor would set the amount of time for communications from citizens and then also on on public hearing items. Now, as it turns out, you know, I went through and watched those portions of your council meetings from the beginning of the year until August the 3rd, and really, the rules as presented to you appeared to me to be basically the way you were running meetings during that period of time, although it wasn't really typically the mayor who would set the amount of time for communications from citizens. It was usually the vice mayor who runs that portion of the meeting, but in any event, so I didn't really feel that the substance of the of the proposed ordinance was in any way an ethics violation. The concern was, well, the mayor is obviously trying to centralize power on herself, but in reality, you know, based on the other rules that remained in place, the council could still overrule the mayor, not only on an individual item, but they could also, if they didn't like the way things work, could bring back a procedural amendment back to the full council for adoption. So, I didn't find any ethics violation there. In terms of how it was brought forward, there were also concerns raised ethically about that, and the concerns had to do with the fact that it was a, placed on the agenda as being from the town attorney and not from the mayor, but of course, it would be the town attorney who would prepare an item like that, and once the item was opened, the mayor readily admitted that she was involved in discussing, bringing this forward. There was also a very specific claim, it was raised in a supplement, supplemental complaint concerning the council procedures item, where, if you recall, during that August 3rd meeting, the mayor said that the motivation for bringing it forward was a communication from a council member and then from a couple of staff members, and there was a public records request made of, okay, well, then who was the council member, and there was an email from councilmember Hendricks that was provided in response to that public records request, and that email says nothing about the duration of speakers, you know, during communications from citizens or from public hearings. It had to do more with somebody who got up during the call to the public and was complaining about not getting a job, basically, or not getting a promotion, and councilmember Hendricks felt that that was, or he raised questions about that. In Mayor Peterson's August the 3rd presentation where she talked about why she brought it forward, she said that she'd heard from a council member and a couple of members of the public with respect to the duration of speakers, and that, as far as councilmember Hendricks's email that was provided later by the mayor, that doesn't talk about that. So, she certainly misspoke about that, but nevertheless, I think when you look at it as a whole, or at least when I looked at it as a whole, obviously, that would have been something that would have caused her to look at the council procedures, because the question was about to look at the council procedures, because the question was about the council procedures. So, certainly, she would have been looking at the council procedures. And then, I'm sure you'll all remember the June 15th meeting where people showed up with signs and were, you know, they were limited at that meeting to a minute per speaker. And after that meeting, the mayor was approached by a couple of folks. That altogether certainly seems logical to have been a reason for her to be looking at those procedural rules. And so, that didn't seem too shocking to me that she would have looked at that and then worked with the town attorney, who is the person to work with on that sort of thing. But what did seem a little stunning to me, honestly, is that it would have been brought back as directly to a public hearing item at the first meeting after you had, you know, what was obviously a pretty intense meeting on June the 15th. And not just that meeting, but throughout the spring, you had, at pretty much every meeting, you had people opposing the eminent domain for the sewer line. My goodness, you had so many, actually, overall, you had probably more comments on that than anything. And then for the go-kart noise and all of that. So, you've had a spring and early summer of very heavy public comment. And so, in my judgment, it seemed like it was not a good judgment for the mayor simply to spring it forward to the extent that it was her doing. And I couldn't really tell, actually, from the documentation, that she acted alone on that. But in any event, in other words, you know, obviously, she went through staff, and I don't know whether staff questioned, hey, why don't we take it to a study session? Hey, do you really want to do this at all right now? But in any event, I do think that it was, it did seem somewhat tone deaf to the circumstances, if you will, to bring that directly to a public hearing. But an ethics violation? I just don't think it raised, at least in my, and of course, you were all there, so you, and they're your rules, so you're the better judges of that. But from where I sit, it didn't look like it rose to the level of an ethics violation. So then, finally, that leaves us with the last ethics complaint, and that had to do with a consent agenda item on August the 3rd. A member of the public wanted to speak on a consent agenda item. Actually, it was Vice Mayor Kaprowski who said on the record, well, we don't allow that. And then there was a comment from the audience, and then the mayor stepped in and said, well, Chris Payne, why don't you explain the rules? He explained the rules, and then away you went, you know, away the mayor went with the rest of the public hearing. They didn't really go back to the question of whether they would allow this person to speak. Not only did that not seem like an ethics violation, it really didn't, I didn't think that one merited an ethics complaint. In any event, I'm sorry to go on for so long, but that's the summary. I'll be happy to answer any questions once we get to that point.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Next, we're going to accept public comments. Since we don't have the cards, I won't be calling your names, so if you would like to speak, you can come forward to the podium one at a time. All speakers will have three minutes, and you are still expected to observe our common standards of decorum and courtesy. No profanity, no clapping. We don't accept personal attacks, threats of political action. That's just inappropriate for this forum, and we would like to have constructive comments made at this time. So, when you come to the podium, please state your name and place of residence, and then begin speaking.
Jim Torgeson, Gilbert, Arizona. Frank was definitely a fun guy to talk to, me being, of course, Delta. But in his report, there were things that I just thought needed to be clarified. One, I don't think that a discrepancy of 99 units, that's just, he dismissed, I think, what really got most of these people upset, and it was extremely germane to the environment they were dealing with. And I don't want to go into too great depth, and again, although I was not part of the Morrison ethics complaint, I can, pretty sure I don't think the mayor did it for profit. You know, so that part of it seems a little strange. But the deference, I don't see how it cannot be seen as deference. And when you're, you know, singling a gentleman out, that would be deference. When you're looking to Howard Morrison for talking points rather than the 82 people or whatever he said spoke, I think that would be deference. If she really doesn't communicate with anybody on staff from Friday through Sunday, okay. You know, maybe she does, maybe she doesn't. That's a FOIA in itself. The code is so loose regarding your ethics that it really needs a revision. I think, I know Eddie Cook did the ethics, and Eddie Cook dropped the ball. That's pretty loose. Part of the complaint was something as simple as topless Tuesday. It wasn't addressed in his report. I don't know what his feeling on that is. I don't know what yours are, but it wasn't addressed. And it starts to go on to talk about the people with the logo. One of that gentleman's complaints was that there was a list of people. Well, did not consider Gamma as one of the top people, who, top five people who worked on the logo. That actually confirms there's a list of people. It's not one of the top five people. So, that would lend credibility to what he's saying about a list of people. So, rather than saying that you can't find, you know, you couldn't get someone to speak on the record, which sounds poor, it does, and you can't convict somebody of a high crime without evidence, it's, there's a difference between innocent and not guilty. Exculpating somebody is different than, well, I just can't prove anything. There's actually, hey, I filed something, and I was wrong. Historically, most people were able to speak. Yes, it's not the, that's not the way the rules are. That's fine. I don't mind being wrong because I get to learn something. But the poor judgment, this is what these people in this town are counting on when they're being this quote-unquote led. And judgment is everything in this. And when the attorney-client privilege prevents the investigator from even determining whether or not the discussion who have brought forth an item is valid, there's two people in this room. Only one of them has the attorney-client privilege. And if that had been given up, we wouldn't even have this question to answer. So, I'm looking at this as there's still a lot of questions, and there's a lot of things that weren't addressed, much more than I read off. And I do thank you for the time letting me speak.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak on this topic? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to move on to, in our Code of Ethics, there is an opportunity for the mayor to provide comments on this topic. Mayor Peterson?
Thank you. I'll keep it brief. I apologize to the residents of Gilbert, my fellow council members for my moments of poor judgment. I've been working over the last many months to grow and learn. I recognize the fact of the influence and weight of the statements I make as mayor. There was never any malice in any of the choices I made. My heart and soul go into this community every single day. I am committed to always doing what is best for Gilbert. I have served this community for over 20 years without any previous incidents. I have been devastated by what we have been experiencing and witnessing in our community. And I especially owe my husband a great deal of gratitude for what he has been dragged through and what this has done to our family. We have both been disrespected, and he does not deserve that as my husband in this town. We also don't deserve to be told to grow a pair when it comes to doing business in this community. There is such a high level of disrespect and vitriol going on, not only in Gilbert, but in this country right now. We need to all take a step back and figure out where we need to be and how to be better people. I intend to build bridges and continue to run this town with Gilbert kindness.
I'd now like to open the discussion up to the council members on our decision to conclude this Code of Ethics complaint that has been investigated. Do any council members wish to speak or make comment? I think we did cover quite a bit with Mr. Cassidy's statement.
I'll make comments if nobody wants to speak up. I'm uncomfortable with this discussion tonight. I'm uncomfortable with this entire investigation. I'm uncomfortable with the dissension in the town. I'm uncomfortable when residents come to the microphone in public interim and they disparage the mayor or they disparage employees, regardless of what their issue is about. I'm uncomfortable that the mayor sounds emotional as she gives her talk tonight. I'm uncomfortable that her husband has probably been affected and probably her marriage and her family. I'm uncomfortable that we're sitting here tonight, and we're going to review this investigation, and we're essentially going to act as a judge or a jury. This is what we're supposed to do. We're not supposed to sit here and decide, do we like the mayor? Do we not like the mayor? Do we think she's a good person? We shouldn't even be factoring in who the mayor is. Should be a matter of looking at accusations and deciding, are these accusations merited? And if they are, what's the ramifications, if any? I'm further uncomfortable that if you sit on a jury and you hear the facts, you don't know the person, you don't really care who the person is, you listen to the facts, you listen to the attorneys, you make a decision, and you never see them again. Whatever decision we make here tonight, we're going to continue to sit on this council together and make some effort to work together. And almost nothing that's said, no decision that's made tonight is going to make that I didn't just become concerned about these issues when I read about this investigation. I met with the town manager and the town attorney probably six weeks ago, and I said, I'm concerned about the behavior of the residents when they come to our meetings. I'm concerned about what I'm hearing from people on the street. And they understood my concerns, and they said, you know, we can't really get involved in politics. That's the council's job. Our job is to run the town. They're exactly correct. I don't know what I expected when I met with them. I guess I didn't know who else to talk to. So then, I went to two different council members. They can identify themselves if they choose to, and I met with them individually. And I said, I don't like this. I don't like the decorum in these meetings. Not a matter with whether I agree or disagree, that's irrelevant. I don't like the decorum. I don't like the way things are conducted. Neither of them disagreed with me. Both chose to just stay silent, and I respect that. I frankly come to think I'm the only one that really doesn't like the way these meetings go. I've been in a public office most of my life. I've never seen anything like this. I reached out to the mayor probably six weeks ago. I sent her a text, said, I don't like what's going on. Would you have time to meet? I think I can help you. That's what I wrote in the text. I can actually read the text here. I still have them. She texted back, that'd be great. I texted back, said, I'd like to meet alone. She texts back, my people have advised me not to meet with anybody alone. I texted back, and I said, it's unfortunate we can't even meet as council members to have any sort of a discussion. I've served in half the elected offices in Arizona. As an elected official, it's like being in a club. When you call another elected official, they meet with you. I have never called another elected official, particularly in a body I sat in, and said, do you have time for a cup of coffee? And I had them say no, ever. When I was in the legislature, I met with Democrats, I met with Republicans, I met with a Democratic governor and a Republican governor. I never once was told, go talk to my staff. I was never told, my people have told me not to meet with you. The path of dealing with this seems to be, let's ignore it. Let's just pretend there isn't a problem. Everybody in town's happy, it's all great. Do your business and stay out of my way. I don't like it, and I've done whatever I could to prevent it from getting to this point, but we're here. Now, we have an investigation. We've got to analyze it, try to determine what the truth is, try to dig through the facts. What this, as I was reading this last night, because I wanted to be familiar with it tonight, because no matter how much we want to brush this under the rug and forget about it, our job is to be aware of what these facts are. And as I was reading it, it reminded me of an experience when I was in graduate school. And I lived in graduate student housing. And the way the housing worked, you just got assigned to living quarters. You didn't pick your roommates. You met them after you moved in. And I had three other roommates. We weren't the same race, we weren't the same religion, we had very little in common other than we were all planning to go to medical school soon. After we moved in, I met my roommates. I learned that one of my roommates was dating a young lady who had a pig. I'd never really seen a pig up close prior to that, but the pig's about six feet long and maybe four feet in diameter. It looks like a big drainpipe you see on the side of the road with little short legs. And they would go over, and this pig came in her house, and it went in her backyard, and they took it to pig shows, and they did pig things. Whatever you do with pigs, that's what they did. And when he'd come back from cleaning the pig and walking the pig and whatever you do, he'd come back to our housing, and he smelled. It smelled kind of like, it wasn't manure, it was, I don't know, farm animal smell. I mean, you've probably all been around a cow. That's how it smelled. So, he'd come back, and our living room would start to smell. And the three of us knew about it, we'd ignore it and pretend like we didn't smell it. We wouldn't say anything about it. That went on for a while, and then I had a lady I was dating at the time, and she says, why don't you come over to my house? Your house stinks. Well, I'm a young man, I want my girlfriend to come over to my house. So, I got my roommates together that I barely knew, and I said, you know, we need to go talk to Steve. We need to tell him something needs to change. And so, we did. We sat down with him. We said, after you go out with a pig and you come back, it smells. And he stepped up, and he said, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. I'll try to, I'll try to do something about it. So, the four of us agreed, and this is four people that don't know each other well, four of us agreed he'd take a shower after he came home from doing pig stuff, and he'd wash his clothes. And the reason I relate that story is because we pretended like we didn't know about it. We pretended like we didn't know there was a stink. We thought the best thing to do, let's just ignore it, until somebody else brought it up and said, I'm sick of the stink. Then we had to do something about it. So, as I go through this investigation, I know we just had a presentation here, 15 minutes or so to go over this. We spent a half an hour looking at a dozen houses on a 50-yard street, finding out where every window was and where the trees are going to go. I can't imagine that most of the people in the audience even know in detail what we're talking about. If you hadn't read this 122-page report, you would know what we were talking about, but you'd probably know where every tree goes on that But you probably know where every tree goes on that 50-yard street we just went over because that's important. When I called this morning and asked, are we going to have a presentation at all? The answer was, I'm not planning on it. So when I got here, I didn't expect we were going to have a presentation, so I didn't, I didn't prepare with a lot of questions, but I'm, I'm glad Mr. Cassidy is here because I, I would like to ask a few questions so that I can understand the report before I make a decision. When I look through the five complaints here, first one he talks about was some communications going with the mayor and the rest of us about some apartments in Morrison Ranch. And the mayor wasn't familiar with the status of the project. She needed to know what the status was because some of the emails were talking about the application had been filed, the proposal had been filed, is what the report says. And she didn't know what had been filed. And she doesn't contact town employees on the weekend. Are you still with us, Mr. Cassidy?
Yes, I am.
I have a question. Since you're doing investigation, you're investigating ethics, I'm assuming or hoping that we made some effort to verify the veracity of statements. When the mayor said she does not ever contact town employees on the weekend, did you look at any weekend emails, phone logs, communications of any sort to verify that's factual? Okay, so if we, if we assume it's factual, the mayor doesn't ever contact employees on the weekends. Myself, I have sent texts on the weekends. I have sent emails. And many times I've gotten responses back. I don't pick up the phone and call anybody's cell phone, but I have communicated. Maybe she never has. It's possible. I guess we have to assume that she's telling the truth and that she did. But since she doesn't communicate with any town employees ever on the weekend, rather than wait till Monday, we needed to respond to these emails immediately on Sunday because there were constituents that had questions. The investigation says she wanted to act promptly. In some places, it sounds like the investigator is actually defending the mayor. But she needed to act promptly on Sunday morning because she'd gotten a number of emails. So the best thing to do is to call Howard Morrison, the developer, the co-chair of her campaign, one of the largest donors to her campaign. As opposed to waiting until Monday morning, we call Howard Morrison. We get an update from Howard Morrison of what's going on because of course he would know because he's an experienced developer. She relays the information Mr. Morrison gave her back to these constituents in a prompt matter on Sunday. She follows up with Mr. Morrison to let him know who the ringleader, who the troublemaker is on this project. So he knew who to contact, trying to facilitate a bridge to resolve this problem, is what it says. Gives him the name of the person, gives him a tally, how many people are supportive, how many are opposed, what their problems are. Now, one of the comments of one of the complainants is, she gave him my name, she gave him my emails. One of the answers is, communication with a public official is a public document. And that's true. Communication with an official or a public official or a government office is a public document. Normally, you obtain that through a Freedom of Information Act request. There's a reasonable assumption as a constituent, when you call an elected official or email them, there's a reasonable assumption that that could become public information. But I would also assume that there's a reasonable assumption that the person I'm talking to would make some effort to maintain confidentiality. They wouldn't wait 10 minutes after my conversation and then go directly to the party I'm opposing and tell them everything I said, tell them my name, tell them how many people. That would be a reasonable assumption on my part, and it may be unreasonable. At our last meeting, the town manager wore, I think it was a blue suit he was wearing, looked like something from the 60s. Had I leaned over to Mr. Anderson and said, can you believe that jacket he's wearing? That's probably public information. But I reasonably would have assumed that he wouldn't have got up and immediately and run over to Patrick and said, hey, Lauren thinks that suit really looks like hell. Is that a reasonable assumption? Maybe it's not. Maybe I should have known. This is public information and the first thing Mr. Anderson should do after I finish talking is go directly to him and tell him what I said. Exactly. So I, I question, I question the ethics in that decision, when the decision was made to go directly to the co-chair of her campaign, one of her largest donors, and immediately share all this information. I have difficulty in thinking there wasn't any hope or intent that this might influence As I continue on through the investigation, and I hope I'm not boring everybody, I know most of the councils probably read this study, did, I'm sharing my opinions and I'm also somewhat sharing, people here stayed this long to see what we're talking about, I'm And I agree with the person that refers to people as weak-minded when they make personal attacks. I've never made a single comment about the mayor ever, and I'm not tonight either. I'm looking at the facts as somebody who's given the job to evaluate this information and make a decision. At the end of the first complaint that we just talked about involving the Morrisons, it's this investigator's opinion, Mayor Peterson exercised poor judgment in singling out a constituent as the most aggressive. Not an ethical violation, poor judgment. Our ethics code is very clear, sets a very low bar. It'd be very difficult to be unethical by the standards we set for ourselves. So we're using poor judgment as something less than an ethical violation. To use my analogy, this stinks. We can describe it however we want, it stinks. Not an ethical violation, but it smells. Another comment in talking about the sign issue, was the sign at the right place? Was it 23 feet, 25 feet, 27 feet, 28 feet? If it was 25 feet and one inch, it didn't follow the law. There's no need to make amends for, well, it was only two feet over, as the investigator has explained. It was only six inches over, it was only 10 feet over. It was over. The answer the mayor gave to the constituents is, the developer will explain that, he's done it many times. Essentially, he's an expert, don't question him, he knows it all. She even sent an email to Howard Morrison. I'm sure you followed the requirements. There isn't any doubt, you followed the requirements. Maybe I'd make the same assumption. I know the Morrisons have done a lot of development. It's probably reasonable to assume they do know. Probably reasonable to assume they did follow the guidelines. The investigator finds, instead of requesting the town staff follow up on constituent questions and concerns about the notice, Mayor Peterson replied explicitly, in the developer's experience, and told Mr. Morrison, I'm sure you followed requirements. Mayor Peterson's failure to at least request town staff follow up on the neighbor's concerns about notice was a lapse in judgment, in this investigator's opinion. I know that attorneys are trained to be wordsmiths. Their whole job is to know the English language or whatever language they're working in and carefully choose their words. Frankly, most attorneys can take either side of an argument and twist it into being believable that your client is right. And that's their job. That's what they do. I'm sure that when he used the phrase lapse of judgment as opposed to poor judgment on the first finding, the first one he's referring to judgment that was poor and the second one, he's referring to a lapse being a complete lack of judgment in the second one. So we've got poor judgment and a lack of judgment or a lapse of judgment. If I'm misstating the facts here, Mr. Cassidy, please, please tell me. As we continue on, we come to confidential information. I talked about the confidential information. The investigator says Morrison Ranch residents had no reasonable expectation that their concerns about the proposed Morrison Ranch apartment complex would be treated as confidential. I agree, as I've said, just as my comments about our town manager's suit would not be confidential. But I would assume that my colleague wouldn't run directly to tell him what I'd said. Maybe it's a bad assumption. The town logo, Wheeler's Club ethics complaint, says the mayor has made it publicly known that she has disdain for the new logo. I have also. I didn't care for the logo when we picked it. Still not excited about it, but that's what it is. Says that I believe she is fostering a toxic work environment with relation to the logo as a result of this disdain. Mayor Peterson provided a written rebuttal of many of these allegations, referring to the ones related to the logo and the Wheeler's Club or whatever they call it. The mayor stated that she would not have considered Gamma as one of the top five people who worked on the logo. We've got seven members on this council. I couldn't tell you who the top three are or the top five are or the top 10 are. And I don't know how many people there are in this group that Gamma's not one of the top five. Whether you want to call it ethical, poor judgment, lapse of judgment, whatever you want to call it, I cannot imagine talking to one of my employees, and I don't have as many employees as the town has, but I have more than the average person has, I cannot imagine sitting with someone and saying, you're not even one of the top five. Why do I care what you think? Why would I take it out on you? You're number six. Well, I wonder if there's more than six in this group. Are we saying this person, you're number six, why don't you look for a job? Now, we could say she didn't say that to him. But we've argued, or the investigator has argued, communication between elected officials are public documents. So how could you possibly think the employee wouldn't know he's not in the top five? Why not even be in the top 10? I questioned the thought process of a leader making a comment like that. I think that comes into our consideration in our discussion here tonight. Mayor Peterson claims to have heard from others, I'm reading from the report again, she claims to have heard from others that Gamma, the complainant, was boasting about spying on the group and reporting allegedly inappropriate posts to the Office of Digital We're talking about a website linked to a town site. How could you spy? And if you did discover inappropriate posts, what should you do? Ignore the stink? Don't talk about it? That's the mistake. He shouldn't have said anything. He should have looked and kept it quiet if he saw inappropriate behavior. That's the problem. He shouldn't have told anybody. Had he kept his mouth shut, he wouldn't have a problem. He might have been in the top five. But he didn't. He reported it. That's the problem. So we kick him out of the group. No more of that. Finding, Mayor Peterson made herself vulnerable to employee unequal treatment claims by being an administrator of a Facebook page linked on the town of Gilbert's Employee Wellness Internet, carried on. I'm not even going to get into the misogynistic pictures that were on there that are going to be offensive to most women and men. I'm not even, I don't even want to talk about it. Poor judgment. So we got poor judgment, no judgment, poor judgment, poor judgment. The public comment procedures complaint. Frankly, I take this one somewhat personal. This is the one where we're going to modify our code to give the mayor control to control speaking time, who's going to speak, if you could speak at all at a public hearing, tremendous amount of power. I pointed out during that meeting that even though the town attorney was given credit for it, and it's not correct, that the town attorney's name would be listed. The name is listed of the person that sponsored it and is responsible for it. But I concede the investigator wouldn't have any way of knowing that, so I'm not criticizing his previous comment, but it's not true. The mayor admitted that she did ask the town attorney to draft this. Then she further went on to explain some staff members, some citizens, and a council member had brought it to her attention. To my surprise and shock, council member was me. Imagine when I found this, how I felt. Because I did send the mayor an email. I sent her an email because we had an employee that was disgruntled because he didn't get a promotion. And he came to the public meeting to criticize the employee that got the promotion. He went so far as to say he has to train him because the employee isn't capable of doing the job that he was given. And I said, I don't think this has a place in a public meeting. The employee should not be abused and criticized because he accepted a promotion, even if he didn't deserve it. What are you wanting him to do? Say, I don't deserve it? Give it to somebody else? Don't give me that job. Employees should not be subject to that criticism. My question, that employees shouldn't be up to that kind of criticism, the mayor responded to my email. I'm not going to read the whole email. The last sentence of the email says, I'd prefer to let the public be heard, that's really what they want, and if it makes them feel better, we and staff can take the comments. She didn't say, let me look into it further. She didn't say, let me get the town attorney to redraft our code so that I can take more control of the meeting and I can control if applicants in a public hearing can speak at all. Didn't say that. She said, I'd prefer to let the public be heard. What she wrote, she copied the town attorney. Because when I sent the email to her asking, is there any way to prevent this kind of behavior of employees criticizing each other, I copied the town attorney. I got the email from the mayor the next morning at 8:54 in the morning. Okay. Now, I work or I own a legal services business. We create court documents and we testify in court for attorneys. Every call that comes to my phone is recorded, all of them. I can get a transcript of it, I can look it up, I can produce it in court, whatever I want to do. After the mayor's email at 8:54, I got an email from the town, I got a call from the town attorney. There is a privilege communication, but the privilege protection is on the attorney's side. The privilege is mine. In that conversation, he called me and he said, Lauren, I got your email, wanted to call you back. I'm not reading from a transcript, I don't have the transcript in front of me, but I spoke with the town attorney right before this meeting and I told him what it says. He didn't dispute it. He says, I don't remember the exact call, but I don't dispute it. In this call, when he called me, he said, we don't have anything in the current town code to prevent an employee from doing what you're complaining about. He says, I talked to the mayor this morning, I think she sent you an email already, which he knew for sure she did because he was copied on the email that I just read from. So he had talked to the mayor prior to our conversation and he had seen her email prior to our conversation. Prior meaning before he talked to me. Now, he's talking to me, he says, there's nothing in the town code currently. I can research further in state statute if you'd like me to. Okay? The mayor has closed the matter. She talked to him earlier in the day. She emailed me, says, I'd prefer let the public be heard. The town attorney then said, if you don't want me to do anything further, I'm going to close this matter. Now, I don't have the transcript in front of me, but the exact words were, close this matter. Wasn't looking to it further, wasn't discussing with the mayor more. So the only way that my email of May 19th could have influenced the mayor's decision to redraft the code to give her all this power to control the meter, the meetings, is during the next three months, I'm trying to give the mayor the assumption that she is being truthful. And these are facts. In order for it to be truthful, that my email that she responded to and to the town attorney said he was closing, he's not working on it anymore, perhaps she was home a month later. And she says, you know, Councilman Hendricks, he's pretty sharp. I really like that guy. I mean, he is on it. He knows what's going on. You know, he sent that email about six weeks ago and I think we ought to dig that back up. And I ought to send that to the town attorney and tell him to take another look at that because really we should redraft this code and we should give me more power to run the meetings. That's what Hendricks meant and I don't want to forget That's what Hendricks meant, and I don't want to forget about what he meant. When I said I thought it was fine, and when the attorney said he's closing the file, I've thought more about it. Every time I hear that guy talk, he is just dead on. We have got to act on that email he sent. So she fires it over to the town attorney, three months later, and says, "Hey, we need to fix this up because I've been thinking about Hendricks's email." Well, it's starting to stink some more. This stinks. This is not what happened. So what must have happened is something that happened at one of our meetings, perhaps when people show up with signs criticizing the mayor. There's nothing wrong with that. She could have just said, "I want to take control of the meeting." But she didn't. She wanted to lay it off on me, which I find personally offensive because it has nothing to do with my email. My email was protecting the town staff. They do a phenomenal job. They shouldn't be abused. They shouldn't be told, "You're not in the top five." And they shouldn't be criticized by their coworkers who were overlooked for a promotion. Period. You can call it unethical, call it, call it whatever you want. I don't care. Getting to the end, this investigator concludes that Mayor Peterson exercised poor judgment. It doesn't mention the lapse of judgment, the complete lack of judgment that he references earlier, but sure what he meant was poor judgment. Didn't violate any ethical codes. As I continue along here, as I, as I said before, I work in the legal business. I know attorneys and paralegals are wordsmiths. They pick their words carefully. They don't put "it" if they mean "thee." They're very careful. We paid a significant amount of money for this report, and I'm confident that Mr. Cassidy was very careful about the words that he used. I'm so confident, and I want to look them up and see what they mean. I would typically say, "Poor judgment is probably judgment that wasn't good." But I Googled it. In fact, you probably all got phones, Google it yourself. And I got a couple of definitions, just so we're clear what poor judgment is as opposed to unethical, or lack of integrity, or blatant mistruth. First one I read is probably a site that isn't going to be as respected by some. It's from a medical journal. It's about Addiction Help. Says, "Poor judgment is an impairment in the psychological recognition of normal, everyday activity which is caused by outside influences. Judgment and insight are vital parts of everyday life, while insight is the ability of a person to gain an accurate and deep understanding of an object or someone. The thoughts of someone suffering from poor judgment do not match up with reality. Statistics have shown that 50% of people suffering from judgment issues do not believe that they suffer from any impairment or that they have a problem at all." That's from a medical journal. If you don't like a medical journal, especially one called Addiction Helper, I found another one. The Harvard Business Journal. Most people have heard of Harvard. Most people are respectful, find it respectful. Judgment: "The ability to combine personal qualities with relevant knowledge and experience to form opinions and make decisions is the core of exemplary leadership. It is what enables a sound choice in the absence of clear-cut, relevant data or an obvious path. To some degree, we are all capable of forming views and interpreting evidence. What we need, of course, is good judgment." I'm not an expert on Harvard, but that's the Harvard Business Journal. The next one's the Harvard Business Review. This one applies more directly to what we're doing right now. "A leader's most important role in any organization is making good judgments. Well-informed, wise decisions that produce the desired outcomes. When he or she shows poor judgment, nothing else matters. All is lost." These are not my words. Mr. Cassidy used the word "poor judgment." All I'm doing is respecting his ability as a wordsmith and reading the definition of the words he used. Last one is an article again from the Harvard Business Journal. Talks about former Hewlett Packard CEO Carly Fiorina. "She had a vision and was not afraid to make decisions, but she repeatedly showed poor judgment when it came to people, paying inadequate attention to the challenges of preparation and execution. So she couldn't make it through the execution phase, and a judgment that is not successfully executed is a failed judgment." Now, the reason I say this one applies more to this council than these mere definitions, which could be somebody's ramblings. This article is about 15 pages long or so, and I'm not going to bore you by reading the whole thing. But it talks about the failures of Carly Fiorina when she was the CEO of Hewlett Packard. She nearly bankrupted the company. In fact, she may have bankrupted the company. I don't know the history well enough. But as the Harvard Business Journal reviews her time and her experience, talks about the board that supervises her, the board that hired her. "A flawed judgment process was not the sole cause of Fiorina's downfall and failure. Hewlett Packard's board showed poor judgment in hiring Fiorina for a job for which she was ill-suited and failing to hold her accountable for her actions." What we have is dissension and distrust in the community. It didn't start tonight. Probably started about two months ago when I first started having these meetings that I described earlier, when I reached out to everybody I could reach out to, including the mayor, saying, "This is not good. We need to fix it. We need to do something about it." And so far, it's fallen on deaf ears. And it may well fall on deaf ears again tonight. I may be the only person here to stand up and speak, and I guess so will you. Last thing I want to comment from is I looked up how do you fix poor judgment? And we can ignore it. We cannot fix it at all. We can decide it doesn't exist. But it gives six steps. This is from the Melius Group. They do analytics and research, largely for industry. Gives six points to work on. Be aware of your own personal bias. Consider opposite points of view that may be relevant. Accept your own mistakes and take accountability. Learn from experience. Avoid flip-flopping and excuses. Those are the main ones. When I listened to the mayor's comments, I heard, "I'm sorry." I heard people misinterpreted my comments. I heard, "I've worked hard." "I've worked a long time." I think she does work hard. I think she's worked a long time. I don't think she intended to have poor judgment. And I think she is sorry and probably wishes these things didn't happen and probably wishes we weren't here tonight. When I reached out to the manager, to the town attorney, the two council members, they can choose to identify themselves or not, I didn't reach out to them and say, "Let's go persecute the mayor." I didn't say, "Let's hold her accountable." I said, "We need to find a way to help. We need to find a way to help her. She's in a bad spot, and people are attacking her at the meetings and all around town." I am comfortable. I did everything I could to help prevent the problem, to help with the problem once it started. And I continue to feel the same way. But to turn your head and say, "There isn't a problem, and this doesn't stink," if that's what we choose to do tonight, good luck. Anybody else wants to talk? I think I've probably said more than enough. Don't be smiling, Mr. Anderson.
Who would like to speak next? Councilmember Yentes, would you like to speak?
If there aren't any other candidates I'd like to comment, I'll chime in. Actually, it would have been easier to hear a chance to speak first, if that's, if there's anybody who's inclined to.
I do think we have some other council members that have some comments. Would you like them to go first?
Yes, please. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Hendricks that none of us want to be here tonight, and none of us want to be dealing with this. I too share concerns about the community and what brought us here today. And in some respects, I think that those who submitted their complaints were looking for a pound of flesh, and I think they should feel that they got that tonight publicly and the months that have led up to that. I'm a big believer that we all make mistakes, and we should all learn from mistakes. And we will only know what we learn from mistakes by how we act in the future. So I choose to accept the mayor's apology and her willingness to address the issues that had come up and move forward in a positive way that represents all of us up here and all of you out there. I took some time to write down some comments. I have to do it in big font, so when you see me turn the page, don't get scared. But I need the bigger font. And I guess I just want my few minutes to make some comments as well. I wrote them down because it's a difficult time and a difficult situation, and I'm going to try to stay on track. Now that the independent review of the various ethics complaints is complete, I'd like us all to take a breath and a brief step back to reflect on how we best move forward. We are rapidly approaching build-out, and the decisions we make in the near term are going to have the impact on generations to come. We can no longer count on growth to help bridge funding, future renovation, and community upkeep. None of us want to row the beautiful community we have worked so hard to become. I mention this because we must work together as a community, town employees and elected officials, to ensure we do not, that we do make the right decisions for the entire community. I can't count the number of hours I've lost sleep over the rage, fighting, and uncouth words that has seemed to taken over not only our town, but cities across the nation. And what has resulted is just more anger and a stalemate at all crossroads. We are better than that. Gilbert has been built on solid financial strategies, community feedback, the opportunity to have your voice heard, and bringing people together to find the best solutions. I fear we may have lost our way over the last few years with all the outside forces bearing down on us individually and as a community. But times of unrest and uncertainty provides us all the opportunity to pause and reflect. Mayor, I appreciate your public commitment to do better in this role. It's a role that has a lengthy learning curve. It's a role that you stepped into in the middle of a lot of uncertainty, a lot of anger, and a lot of hard decisions. And I think that we should all have grace to give us all time as a new council to learn and grow together. I speak for myself when I say that I can do better as well. I'm in charge of my words and how I choose to use them. And I choose to deliver my thoughts and leadership decisions in a more thoughtful and kinder way, to make sure I'm considering all sides of issues and to look for compromises to move our community forward. I've made mistakes along the way, and I'm sure I will stumble again as a council member. But I'll do my best to show everyone the respect they deserve. What I'm asking is that our entire council dedicate their time in a kind and respectful manner, that we truly work together to find solutions and we bridge our differences with meaningful dialogue and feedback from the entire community. I also ask our community to join us in this effort, to be part of the solution, not the stalemate. We want to hear from you, but please remember to speak in such a manner as you would want to be addressed. We are all citizens up here. Everyday people just like you. We have spouses, children, and some of us grandchildren that witness the not-so-pretty side of politics. I know you would never want your family to be subjected to the type of behavior we have endured this past year. We've given up our lives to serve this community, and I know in my heart each person sitting here with me today only wants what is best for you and your families. And the fact that we may disagree at times on the path to get us there ensures we are finding the best solutions for our community. It's interesting that I wrote the previous comments prior to be informed that there are negative signs against me placed throughout the community. For one vote I made, the intent is not to discredit, the intent is to discredit more than 25 years of commitment to this community. I'm not here to explain that vote, only to say the sacred process of the council vote worked. There were differing positions expressed and different segments of the community represented during that vote. And at the end of the day, the motion failed. The issue was put to rest. I honor the final vote of my colleagues and believe the will of the people was upheld that day. And that's what we do up here every time we meet. But it's such a sad day today as one individual attempts to erase the work of a community advocate for the pure pleasure of misleading the public during a crucial election. And that this person would not care that those I love would be hurt by this, including my innocent grandchildren. Shame on you. If these past years have taught us nothing else, it should be clear that bullying and intimidation through shame is not acceptable and will not be tolerated by society. Regardless of the issue before us, the silent citizens cannot be ignored because louder voices cause us to feel uncomfortable. I'm reminded of a saying I heard recently. "Be careful of who you hate. It may be someone you love." We have a job to do, and it's time for this hatefulness and deceit to stop. We must bring decorum back to our meetings, and I ask my fellow council members to join me in this effort. Let's put the anger behind us and get back to the business of keeping Gilbert an amazing community. And Mayor, I know in your heart that that's where you want to be. And I know that together, we're going to help to make you successful, the rest of the council's successful, and all of our employees that work so hard every day. We want to hear from our citizens. We want to take your allegations seriously, and I believe we've done that. But I believe that it's time to move on. And thank you for that. And on a side note, a lighter note, I want to thank my husband. It's his milestone birthday today, and he's sitting at home by himself so that I can be here to help serve our community. So thank you, honey. I promised to make it up to you, but this was so very important, and we need to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Yentes?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. A couple thoughts. I'll try not to repeat it, but... Can you hear me okay?
You break up every once in a while?
Okay. Then I'll keep this exceedingly brief. I appreciate the decision and wisdom to put this matter in outside councils review. I think that was a good decision and trying to get the best, by best, I mean, most unbiased look at these complaints that were filed. I think what we received in return for those services is a fair assessment in the good judgment of a competent attorney. And I appreciate all the thoughtful comments the council members who spoke on the issue so far as well. So given that, I looked at these individually. I read the reports. I think it was summarized by both council, as in the legal council, as well as council members, that there's, of course, some details in here that, you know, that perhaps warrant, I guess, thoughtful consideration by the mayor herself. I guess thoughtful consideration by the mayor herself, and less so of a clear-cut violation. The one complaint that I paid particular attention to was issue brought forward by the town employee, because obviously it's a very serious allegation when we're talking about creating a hostile work environment. So that one, I came to the same conclusion the attorney said. This is kind of a he-said, she-said. I don't... there's really nothing we can do from, you know, that set of facts to apply it to an ethics complaint and make a clear judgment. And so absent of that, I didn't find the other ones to be as clear-cut. And so this really does boil down to a political issue, which, in my opinion, is not really the purview of the council to decide how another duly-elected official should be admonished or chastised or punished for decisions, but one for the electorate. And that's really kind of where I settled on this matter, is I do think... I have a lot of respect for the democratic process. And so when somebody is elected by their voters, that holds a lot of weight with me. And it's up to the electorate to take courses of action that they think is appropriate so that they feel like they're being represented in the manner in which they choose. And so because we really don't have any guns here to apply to an ethical policy, I think this really is a matter for the electorate to take whatever courses of action they deem appropriate from here so that they feel, you know, properly represented. And of course, there's avenues to do that, whether it's, you know, recall or the next election cycle, or they come to council meetings and they express their opinions. And so with that, I'm happy to make the motion to accept the ethics complaint because I think that's basically one of two actions we can take and move forward from here.
So Councilmember Yentes, you've made a motion to accept the report and recommendation from the outside investigation. Is that correct?
I don't necessarily recommend to accept the findings and leave it at that.
Okay. Are there any other comments?
Yes, Vice Mayor, thanks. I want to thank Chris Payne for sending this work out to a third-party outside council that's outside of the town of Gilbert to help insulate the town and the investigator from the perception of any improper influence or conflict. The mayor suffered a lot of public criticism as a result of what the investigator characterizes as poor judgment. I've always found the ethics complaints to be incongruent with somebody who's dedicated to decades of their life to serving this town and this community. The findings were of no ethical violation, no conflicts of interest. So when there is a motion, whatever it is, I'm going to support a... no formal action is taken against the mayor. I think what she suffered and her family suffered already is enough. Thank you.
Okay. I believe we... I'm sorry, might have an open motion on the floor that would need to be seconded if we were going to take a vote.
I'll second it. Could I make a comment? I think Councilmember Yentes made the motion, and we accept the findings of the ethics Just very quickly for me, I agree with Councilmember Hendricks. This stinks. But the reason it stinks is because no matter what we do tonight, this community's going to suffer for it. And I'm ashamed of that. No matter what we do, one side's going to be upset, and the other side is going to be satisfied, so we're just going to continue to go after each other. And I'm... that upsets me deeply. I want to underscore what both council members, Yentes and Tilke, have said. Excellent comments. And I want to... we were talking about wordsmithing tonight, and the words I want to use are "real intent." And I know Councilmember Hendricks is familiar with those words, "real intent." And I don't think there was any real intent here. And that's why I think the findings that were made by our outside council are appropriate.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. Please vote to accept the findings from the outside council. That motion passes 7-0, and that concludes our review of the report and recommendation of this subject. Thank you for going through this process.
Vice Mayor Kaprowski, could we just clarify? It was 6-0 because the mayor abstained.
Sorry.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to future meetings. Mayor Peterson?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have nothing for policy items, nothing listed for future meetings, communications, report from the town manager on current events. We still have four items to talk about in executive session.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My comments brief. I want to thank the employees that we recognized tonight that will be leaving our organization, and all of them beloved and going to leave huge holes. But Amy, Mark, Albert, and Joseph, congratulations. Thank you for your years of service, and we hope that your golden years are everything, that you deserve them to be. Lastly, on a more somber note, I wanted to mention the passing of a beloved member of our team in our Public Works Department, Conrad Ramon. He was with us 28 years and actually scheduled to retire next year. He was actually employee number 619 in this organization. I don't even know which number we're on now, but he started out as a maintenance worker for us, then became our first streetlight technician, then supervisor in streets over traffic signals and streetlight teams. And he spent a few years supervising Gilbert's unpaved shoulders in landscape right-of-way. And then from 2007 on, he supervised the traffic signals and streetlights teams, and he was just a critical member of the team of people that helped design our infrastructure that we enjoy today. More important than what he did for us, though, was who Conrad was as a person. He was an outdoorsman who loved to go hunting, fishing, camping, cooking, and going out on his side-by-side. He was a very big fan of the Dallas Cowboys. He treasured time spent with his family most of all. He was a member of Council 3121 for the Knights of Columbus, where he was the cook for the fish fry every Friday. He was employed by the town of Gilbert for over 30 years and was looking forward to retiring and becoming a snowbird in Linden, Arizona. He was very fond of making memories and being the life of the party anywhere he went. Once a month, he went to... volunteered to assist with park cleanup at the park for St. Mary's Catholic Church, as well as adoptive family and ARC. He was a father figure to many of his nieces and nephews and adored playing games with them, a loving brother to his Ramon family, an amazing grandfather to his granddaughters, a loving and caring father to his daughters, and an adoring husband. He was his mother's golden boy, a favorite brother to his sisters, and a second father to his son-in-law. He was loved by many and is deeply missed by all. Conrad Ramon really was a very special person for any of you who ever got the chance to meet him, and we are deeply saddened by his passing. Thank you, Mayor.
Patrick, that makes me nervous. My number was 238.
Wow. Wow. Patrick, thank you for sharing that news with us. I'm so sad for Conrad's family and for his coworkers, and he gave so many years to this community. And I know that he will be greatly missed by everyone that he's touched here in the town of Gilbert and his family, and that's just very sad news to end the night on. Thank you for sharing that with us. I've just asked Monica to follow up from the mayor and council's office on behalf of us with that item. Next, we have report from council on current events. Just by accident, a report on boards and commissions was left off the agenda this evening. The clerk's office apologized for that. If you have anything to report, please use this time to do so.
Mayor, could I... it's not a committee report, but...
No, sure. Anything from council.
Thanks. Just a reminder that this month is domestic violence awareness, which is why we're wearing purple, so I'm sorry if I stole your thunder on that one, and also breast cancer awareness. So remind your loved ones to get their annual mammogram. Thank you.
Probably heard enough from me tonight, but I got a couple of comments to make. One, Councilor Tilke reminded me of one thing I meant to comment on previously, and I didn't. I'd been out of town, and I got back just a couple nights ago. And when I got back, I was driving through, and I saw one of these signs, and I took a picture of it. It's a picture of Councilmember Tilke. It's a very nice picture. It looks like she was at some event. She looks very good. And it has comment about an issue we voted on months ago. It was voted on, it's done, it's gone, it's not coming back up. And when I saw it, I started to call her, but it was later in the evening, and I texted her. And I... we may not always agree on everything we do up here, but I've known Kathy Tilke for probably maybe 25 years. We're not social. We don't take our spouses out to dinner. But I've still known her. I've worked with her. I've attended many events with her. And when I saw this sign, I just... I was shocked. I mean, you've got a beautiful picture and a comment written over the top of it. This sign is not even a legal sign. Our sign code is clear. This sign does not pertain to any political candidate. It doesn't pertain to any political activity coming up. This sign is nothing that can legally be posted at any time ever. And I text her, just saying, "Hey, I am so sorry." She texted back, "Thanks." And it's just... it's not even a matter of agreeing with positions. I can't even imagine how it must feel when you drive through the town, you've got your husband, you've got your wife with you. You're driving along, and wow, here's a picture, a very clear picture of you with something intended to defame you, I mean, potentially even incite violence of people who didn't approve what was on the sign. And I just... I'm sorry that she's having to deal with it. I'm sorry her husband has to deal with it. And I'm sorry somebody chose to do it. On a lighter note, I hope Patrick and I will be able to work together after tonight. I apologize about the suit comments. I would never have made that known, but I was afraid Anderson would... so I figured it's best just to get it out in the open, and I hope we'll be able to...
Councilman Hendricks, I understand fashion genius is seldom understood and appreciated in its own time.
And lastly, my last comment, as I said earlier, I really enjoy recognizing Gilbert employees because so many of them are so outstanding. I'm just continually impressed about the culture we have and the pride they take in their work. And as I'd mentioned earlier tonight, I just finished building a house, and I've... I don't know how many houses I've built in my career, but at least hundreds and maybe thousands. And I just built my own house. And when you build a house, you have building inspectors come out at every stage. They come out and they check to see if you dug up the dirt right and leveled it right and poured the concrete right and pounded the nails right, and everything you can imagine. And I don't know any builder that appreciates the building inspectors when they come out. And I don't appreciate them either. Every time he came out, he found something wrong, and I had to go fix it. But I got to tell them, the two guys I dealt with, I dealt with Robert Edkins and Ed Waters. And if you've got to have an inspector, these guys are fantastic. I mean, they came out, and they always find problems, but when they came out, they had an attitude that they were teaching me how to build a house and showing me things that I'd gotten wrong and I should have gotten different. They didn't come out with arrogance. In fact, Robert came out one day in the... I think it was July. I know it was hot. And I had put up a fence around the perimeter, and to be perfectly honest, I was hoping I could get away with putting it up, and nobody'd notice. And I just put it up. When he came to inspect, he wouldn't notice the fence. Well, he noticed the fence. He had an iPad, and he took pictures. And he says, "Hey, that fence wasn't here last time I was here." I'm like, "Crap." So he wanted to dig a hole. They call it a pothole to see what the footing under the fence is, to make sure it's deep enough. So I was supposed to dig a hole before he came back to re-inspect it, and it's about 140, and I started to dig the hole, but the dirt's like concrete, so I dig away and I dig away, and he shows up the next day to re-inspect. Well, the hole wasn't quite dug, so I pleaded with him. "Come on, come out here. I'll dig it right now." So I go out, and I dig a while, and I'm getting tired, and I'm old. So Robert said, "Give me that shovel." This is the building inspector. Building inspectors don't do this. They write up lists of things you did wrong. They don't take a shovel and dig a hole on your job site. Well, Robert dug a hole. He helped me dig that thing up. It probably took us 10 minutes, and we're both sweating, and we're both hot. And he says, "Okay, we're down far enough. I see you got that footing deep enough. I'll sign it off. Let's go." But these two guys, Robert Edkins, that helped me dig the hole, and Ed Waters was the other guy, these guys are as good as you get. And if they were here tonight, I'd thank them. I did thank them at the end of the house. Thank you.
I will close with no statements tonight and recess this meeting so that we can reconvene in executive session. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening.